I have to break out the old tape recorder.
We're live.
We're good. Alright. Alright. This is October twenty first, two thousand twenty five Dayton town council meeting. Uh, can I have a roll call, please?
Mike.
Yes.
Steve.
Present.
Rocky.
Present.
Mark.
Present.
Carla.
Present.
First on the agenda is Rebecca Ferny and this is a little optimistic she might be here this month, but apparently she's not. Second on our agenda is Tim Clark with Intech, correct?
Oh, nice to meet you, Tim.
Yeah, presentation for the ADA plan, uh, assist contract. If you would, uh.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Say your name where you found for the record, please.
Tim Clark with Intech Management Group, local company. Uh, we do a lot with BFNS and Chris. Uh, they're the ones that asked us to come in here initially and have a discussion with what, what it is that we do and how we do things. Uh, we won't go into all the different things we do, but when Emma passes her cards out, this is Emma, she is with, um, she's my admin. And for those that are technically advanced more than what I am, she has a QR code on her business card that you can pull up to see everything that we do. So, um, I was asked to come in and give you guys a presentation on what is required with ADA. Um, I can say that started yesterday, I've been in a symposium yesterday, today, and all day tomorrow from ten o'clock till six thirty. Doing class to continue my accreditation to be an ADA certified coordinator, so. As asked command, uh, we did put a contract together with some of the things that Ms. Doggass and I talked about. And Colin from BFNS on some of the things that you are gonna be, what you are already required to do. So there's a whole lot, so I guess what I would like to do is open this up to you guys and say, what is it that, you know? We gave you, we gave you some language in a contract to say, these are the things that we can help you with right away to get you to where you need to be. Our goal is when we put contracts together, when we start working with municipalities or private businesses, title three, you're a title two or title three entities is. We really work ourselves out of a job because when we do the right thing for you, we'll get you trained, then we don't have to show up anymore. If you have phone calls or whatever, pick up the phone call, it's who will answer phone and answer questions you have. You'll find that you'll, you will develop a group of people that you can rely on and bounce questions off of. Because when you look at the whole ADA program, there's nobody that's a complete expert in every aspect of it. But you'll find the ones that do a good job have the contacts of the places where they need to go for things that they don't have answers to. So, let me open this up to you guys and say, you know, tell me what it is, what you think that you're looking for, what you're needing. To be able to move forward with everything that's going on in federal government and as you know, NDOTs over top of a lot of this right now, so.
Well, you just said where we need to be. Uh, can you explain that, please?
I can. So, there's a lot of different things that the Department of Justice looks for from you guys and now NDOT is looking for you guys. And NDOT, the big thing with them right now is all the MVH stuff. If you don't have your paperwork and documentation in place, they're gonna, they're gonna deny your grant. So if you're great, looking for grant money for CCMG and you don't have the paperwork into them, they're, they're rejecting it at this point. Chris can vouch for that from some of the other things that they're finding and their aspect of the business world with this whole situation that's going on. Is it used to be, you were wanting to do a project and you apply for CCMG money and you didn't do anything until you knew you were gonna get the money before you started to design. Now they want you to do the design before you ask for the CCMG money. So this is kind of the same way where if you want MVH money, if you want CCMG money, if you don't have your ADA documents in place. If, when you send your stuff in, if they don't have, uh, Taffney Keys doesn't have your information, she's going to, they're gonna kick it back right away. So that's their way of saying get up to speed and it's gonna make our job easier as NDOT to say, we're not even gonna look at this project. Because they don't have the paperwork and the documentation in place.
So is there anything this, uh, beyond NDOT?
Well, and it's all controlled, so we're gonna go back in time. So, all this started in nineteen ninety and we were required to have all, you were required to have all your documentation in place by nineteen ninety two.
For in twenty twenty five? All of our documentation in place for what?
For, for your ADA transition plan, your Title Six policies. And your transition plan goes into, um, all your buildings, you know, I'm not gonna pick on you, but. When I read this, it says, please enter through the front door. If I'm in a wheelchair, how do I come through the front door? You're directing me to a part of the building that I don't have access to. Now you do have a side door that I could come in, you know? You're, if somebody were to walk into the building today that, that is hearing impaired, how do you, how do you get your message out to them? They wanna know what all steps you're taking to make that happen today. So part of that, and it's an easy thing to do, is if somebody came in here that was, that was deaf, if your document is in place. They would be required to give you forty eight hours before your meeting to have somebody here as a sign language interpreter. But if you don't have your documentation in place and we walked in here today and I'm deaf and I'm trying to have a conversation, I can't have the conversation because. Is there anybody here that speaks sign language? Those are the things that they're looking for is that you have these things in place. There's a lot. Um, I want you to also know that as a volunteer myself, I run and I started this with the city of West Lafayette in two thousand eighteen. There's a coalition in all of Tipping new county, which I'm gonna make this a sales call for. Coalition, it's free to anybody. The coalition is out there to try to avoid lawsuits. So if somebody were to go to a business here in town, they could buy a lawsuit if they're not up to ADA standards. The coalition is out here, so if people can, and which is one of the requirements that they, ADA requires you to do, is have people within your community. They can go out to talk to business owners or municipalities to say, we have a complaint. The complaint says such and such, here's the form, here's the person that signed it. We go out as volunteers because we don't want Big Brother telling everybody how to do everything. So, I run this coalition in Tipping new county and Clinton county as a volunteer. I don't work for a municipality, I work for myself, but it's our way of getting the word out to people that ADA is a big issue and we need to make this stuff all work. So, um, with the coalition, we need to invite you guys to come to our meetings, which actually we have a meeting next week on the twenty ninth. And it's, um, three o'clock in the afternoon at the Tipping new county building. You have elections coming up, right? Next month, which is not very far away, which I know the county runs that, but where do you do your elections? Is it in this building?
Well, not this year, but next year.
Oh, it's next year's election. So, you have to have all that stuff in place. So those are the things we would help you get up to what today's standards are, could be working in the right direction. We would have to, part of the contract is we're gonna go through any buildings that you guys are in charge of, that you have. And write up anything which is what we call the living document of everything that's not ADA accessible. And it's not just the building itself, but what about your website? Is your website accessible? Are your documents in your website accessible? Most people say, well, yeah, they're in there, but in today's day and age, if somebody's visually impaired, the, the computer reads it to them. If you don't have your documents in the right format, it doesn't read it to them and that's against policy. So that's our job is to help you get all these things in place to make this happen.
So, they might understand we're, we're gonna need somebody up here doing sign language while the meetings are going on?
Only if it's, only if somebody calls in.
They have to give us so much notice.
Once you put a policy in place, right now you don't have a policy, so you, you're out of standards. But your policy will be, somebody's gotta give you forty eight hours notice if they're visually impaired or hearing impaired. That way you can plan to have a year in which we would have somebody.
And that's where the coalition would come in, hand you, contact them and they could send someone.
They'll send somebody.
What if he was, somebody can't show up? As far as. With, there's nobody to do this.
A sign language interpreter?
Right.
Oh, we got a whole school of people, so we rely on pretty a lot for that, so we would have somebody here. And if the, if, if the person that's coming here, these are all standards, if, if their presentation is gonna be more than fifteen minutes, you have to have two people. Because in fifteen minutes, they gotta switch. One person can't do the sign language for thirty minutes or sixteen minutes. So, it's knowing and understanding. Our job is just to help you guys along. Are you actually the ADA coordinator?
I don't know, ask him. All I know is on the agenda for him to assign somebody. I thought I was, but apparently I'm not. I don't know.
And I guess, uh, maybe I misunderstood from when I read the minutes, it said that you were assigned last month, I think. So, so yes, the answer is yes.
You do, okay. So. You're, you were voluntold into an ADA coordinator. So, part of what will help her do is the process of getting up to speed and some of that is getting some of the classes. Because you have to get accreditation for to be an ADA coordinator. You, you have less than fifty employees and, and so some of your requirements are a little bit less. And deadlines are a little bit further out because you have less than fifty employees, so.
Seems like a big expense for a small town.
I'm sorry?
It seemed like a big expense for a small town, but it's basically cover if we were to get sued. I mean, it's another federally mandated but not funded project.
Correct. And then, and, and the cost you gave was, it's not, it's no more than.
No, it's what's he, that's correct.
So it could be less than.
Right.
And so.
But it could, it also could be this forty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
It could be.
Could be.
But it, it has to be done. I mean, we don't have, we don't, the only option we have is to not do it, be out of, uh, compliance, and we will qualify for CCMG.
So, I'm glad you're asking that question because it's always, money is never an issue until you have to talk about money. Then it's always an issue. The only time I've ever done a project, and I've been doing this for thirty-five years, that we've never had an issue with money is the house that's going up on Hagerty right now. Which I don't know if any of you know about that, the house on Hagerty, no?
You're a millionaire?
Yes. I won't even go into the dollar figure because it's here or there, but that's the only project I've ever been on thirty-five years that money has never been an issue, so. So money becomes an issue and that was one of the things I was gonna talk about is, you know, because I, we originally put on here the deadline, we were trying to get everything done before, before the end of this year. And we're pushing November already, so. Is this something that you would wanna put, do part of it in twenty twenty-five and then move, move some of that into twenty twenty-six?
Well, I was, I, I would think probably in order to accomplish it, probably, I was surprised when you did that deadline, but, um.
So, I, I'm gonna guess that when this is done, that there's gonna be things discovered that are gonna cost us more money.
That is correct.
Right.
When you say things are, we're gonna discover things that you need to correct that are not ADA accessible.
Right.
Yes. But what we're gonna do is put a twenty-year plan together for you. You don't have to run out and do all this stuff today. Your, your twenty-year, the transition plan, what the government calls a living document, is something that's gonna change every single year. And that's one of the things we're gonna train you to do is as you're making corrections, you know, outside, you need to put up a sign that shows where the accessible door is. You know, that's an expenses you're gonna have. Somebody here can put the sign up, but you're gonna have to buy us up.
Over that twenty-year, you're gonna give us, what prioritize what we should take care of first, correct it?
We will put a trump priority on a, a level one, two, or three, but it doesn't mean you do all the ones first and then go to the twos. It's as money's become available, you pick and choose which projects you wanna get.
So, as we, as a twenty-year plan, I'm assuming that is a, it's not a standing target, it's gonna continue to move, they're gonna change things, right?
Totally.
I'm guessing ADA requirements are gonna change.
The new standards are supposed to come out in twenty twenty and they're not out yet, but they're, some of the new standards are coming out. Now, if you change, because we're gonna buy the twenty-ten standards, if you've done something before twenty-ten and the new standards come out. And you meet the twenty-ten standard, it doesn't mean you have to go out and change that today. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, you're gonna find some of the.
Do we need to change it at some point, or does it mean we don't have to right away?
At some point when you're going to do a renovation project. So you don't have to run out like curbs are a big, the truncated domes, the little temples. It used to be they kept, they kept those off about four inches off the edge of the sidewalk. Well, the standards now, that was before twenty-ten. The standards now is they have to go all the way to the edge of the sidewalk, all the edge to the curb or the edge of the sidewalk. But it doesn't mean you have to go out and run out and do those today because they met the right standards that they were put in.
And when it comes to this stuff for buildings, is it purely buildings that have, um, public access or is it all buildings?
All buildings, because what if your employees become disabled? You make accommodations. And that's part of what you're gonna find is, when we see municipalities and we, you know, I did off West Lafayette as a consultant for a lot of years. And then as an employer, the city of West Lafayette. But when you come to a situation where somebody does become disabled, even if it's for a six-month period of time or a six-week period of time. You make accommodations and you dock that information of why you did what you did. So if somebody ever comes back to do an audit, which they are gonna start doing audits because there aren't any people to do that. Is you show them any documentation of why you did what you did for a temporary situation.
This is, this is the only public building that we have access to, correct? All the other buildings are?
A police station.
Okay.
Everything else. The maintenance bar.
Without, without the public access.
Right, but it, but he's saying it's still.
With their boys, you still have to do it.
Still have to do.
Right.
It's any buildings that you own. That will fall into this.
Houses and lift stations and all that kinda stuff, right?
So how do, how do you do a lift station? How do you make a lift station ADA compliant?
Basically, the parking spaces and the entrances, the bathrooms, because there's gonna be places that they can't go.
You don't have any lift stations that would fall into that, that kinda, they're not enclosed or anything.
So there's gonna be certain areas that.
Your water.
Mechanical rooms.
Part of it.
The waterhouse for your water. But mechanical rooms and electrical rooms do not have to be accessible. They fall outside of ADA.
But that, I mean, that'll be part of what he does. He'll go through and check and see what, what buildings are what and what has to be done. And then he'll give us the list and help us get the transition, our transition plan updated to what it needs to be and.
But whether a space is used or not, it still needs to be accessible.
Yes.
So it's like upstairs.
So, are there, is there grant money available for, for your, your fee?
That would be a question for somebody besides myself.
Because this is a lot of money and we've been spending money like, like drunk sailors lately. And, and it doesn't look like it's gonna come to any end soon. In addition, uh, I'm not sure what's gonna be happening with property taxes going forward. There's a whole lot of things in flux and, uh, you know. Uh, this is concerning, it's a lot of money.
Totally understand. That's the part, again, I said, money's never an issue till you have to talk about it. I don't know what your budgets look like to know. You know, my goal is to get you where you need to be, so when you do apply for grants, especially if they're government grants, that you're gonna get them so they don't mix you on the process.
Chris, if I understood Colin right, for, for the next CCMG, you would have to have, have this in place for you guys in order to submit our request by June.
That's my understanding.
So.
Colin's gonna know that better than me, but that's my understanding.
That is correct.
So we would need to have everything in place to be eligible for CCMG to apply for the twenty twenty-seven year CCMG in June of twenty-six.
Lot of money, but even at forty-two thousand, if you get sued for the littlest thing, it's gonna be well over that.
Yep.
Well, this, is this gonna guarantee we're not gonna get sued?
No.
No. No. You get sued, you can get sued, even if you do everything right, so.
Which is a wrong reason to not do it.
So we just.
I, I didn't, I. I didn't recall anybody saying we weren't gonna do it. But I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if we shouldn't be looking at, seeing if there are some other options available. This is a lot of money.
What other options would there be to get our transition plan in place and to accomplish what needs to be done?
As far as putting everything together, I mean, you, I've talked to other, other companies that do the same thing.
Well, let me, let me ask a question, because obviously it's not one of my strong suits. So of a forty-two K, I mean, that's, that's a possibility. We can spend up to that much money. Do you have an idea of what it's gonna, the cost just to get the initial survey done and, and looked at? Or is it where you have, you have to kinda commit to forty-two thousand and there's no.
No.
There's no individual, we can't say, hey, let's, let's spend the five, whatever you think it would be to get a complete survey done so we can say, okay. We're in great shape, we're all screwed, um, and then go from there. I'm just wondering if that might be.
That's a great option, because, and I wanna explain, when we sat down and talked about this, this was us looking at this with an open end, not knowing. Knowing where you are and where you wanna be is how we wanna get you there. And we can, we can sit back down and go through numbers and say, come up with a number to say, we can get you your Title Six documentation put together. We can get your transition plan get together for this much money and only do those things. This is more of an open-ended to say, what is the next step that you're gonna want us to do? What is the next step that you're gonna want us to do?
Is there, and I know this is a region and I, obviously it's, I understand you just don't wanna say anything, but what are we? What are we thinking for the first steps to run the, the town? Is it like, hey? Typically, it costs ten K to get us the initial survey done and get a rough idea of what we're gonna be doing forward. And then, you know, the next step is to start working on, you're, like you said, a priority list. I mean, that typically takes another five or ten K. I mean, it's just so that we have an idea, you know, are we looking at ten K a month for the next ten months? Or are we looking at, you know, tomorrow you're gonna, we're gonna get a bill for forty-two thousand dollars?
No, that's, I, I think what you're looking for is more of an à la carte. Here's a number to do this, here's a number to get to the next.
We'll probably still end up at the same number, but it's a little easier to chew on it when it's done in pieces.
Well, you know, if this was another seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, this would have to go out for three bids.
Correct.
Anything over fifty thousand. And I, I don't know, I think, I think we need to explore and see if there's other people that, that we can do this for. That's my, that's my opinion. Obviously, we can vote on it.
Never, never once for a professional consultant have you, has anybody ever wanted to do more than that? BFNS recommended him, Colin recommended him.
I understand they did. Carla, you're usually the one who advocates for any time.
Not on, not on professional services. Never have I asked for that on professional services.
That's my opinion.
You, you asked me to do this, Colin made a recommendation, and now you wanna tie my hands and I can't do what he, what he could do.
What I'm, what we asked.
I don't, well, I, I, again, I, I don't think he's trying to tie the finger, but I mean, it's not, it, it doesn't, doesn't, doesn't mean we're not gonna go with this gentleman tomorrow anyway. But honestly, on any large purchase, I don't think it's an unreasonable request to say, hey, what would, you know, is there somebody else who does it? Would they gonna charge us for that? I don't know. This ADA is one of those things where, I know it was, my, my late wife was in public health and, and had to do this the whole time. And it was constantly, uh, uh, thrown in her side because as much as she wanted to make sure everybody had access to the buildings that she operated. It was a constant, you're shooting at a moving target. You know, today it's this, this is what they require tomorrow, it requires this, well, now we gotta redo that. And that's fine when you're Lafayette or West Lafayette, you've got millions of dollars coming in and, um, when you're in the town of fifteen hundred, it's a little bigger expense. Obviously, we, we need to do it, we don't have a lot of choice here. Because all, you know, lawsuit or no lawsuit, we have to be compliant for, A, it's the right thing to do. And B, if we're gonna continue to try to use, uh, money from outside organizations, they're gonna require it. So.
I, I have complete confidence that you could do this. That's, that's, that's certainly not a question. The question, the question is that, as Steve said, you know, we're a community of fourteen hundred people, okay? We're, we have limited resources and we gotta be careful how we spend it.
Absolutely.
So.
And, and Chris will vouch for this too. We don't try to go after the big communities. We go, because we understand, I grew up in a small community in Pennsylvania. You guys are sitting up here, sitting here talking before the meeting started about football. I came here in nineteen eighty on a football scholarship, played football at Purdue for four years. Went on to NFL for a short period of time, you know, but I live here now. I've made my life here. I've spent the majority of my life here in Tipping new county. So, I wanna help people, you know, it's, 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 when I started, when I became a coordinator in two thousand eleven. Because we do so many building things, it all goes with buildings. So we evolved into doing, we went into business in nineteen ninety-six. Twenty-nine years ago this month, we went into business doing building stuff and then we evolved into doing ADA stuff because ADA is a big thing. And people are required to do it and they don't understand. I now have two children that have been diagnosed with, uh, A, they both have a disability, they're in wheelchairs. My son is going to be in the military, he's, he's using the walker now. It's basically ALS, so what I'm dealing with. But I was doing ADA before that ever happened. And people say, well, you do it now because, your kids is like, no, I do it now because it's the right thing to do. But helping the small communities because you don't, you know, I don't know how much money you have. I know for me to do all the, the six items that are on there, that's what it's gonna take. But if we pull that back and say, let's get you a transition plan, which is your living document and the paperwork that goes along with that. Let's get your Title Six in the place, which is what you need and you're gonna have to have that if you're gonna apply for your CCMG money or otherwise we're gonna kick it back. You know, if we can do that for, I'm just gonna throw a number out, which I normally don't like to until we sit down and talk about it. But if we could do that for fifteen thousand dollars, that's getting you to start to get you the paperwork. And then we can start working together since you're the ADA coordinator, getting that stuff and helping you get up to speed as we go in that dollar figure. And then we start working on some of the other stuff when the money's become available, because we understand. You don't have the millions of dollars like they do in West Lafayette that they can save. We can, we can hire a professional consultant for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year to do this. They ask me, I don't wanna do it. I'd much rather focus on the small towns because you get to know the people and you understand where they're coming from. And they're more dear to your heart, so.
So can we change this to fifteen thousand then?
Sure.
And I'll take a seat.
Well, I mean, you would need to alter it to, to what you're going to do as opposed to everything that's included.
Correct. Which we can do. So, I'll have it ready in front of you, so we'll give you a folder.
I would.
Keep it down there somewhere.
Yeah, I, I do it at the next meeting. Why don't, why don't we do this then?
That's what you guys wanna do.
If you're willing to do that, then let's get an updated contract and then we'll, we'll bring this up at the next meeting again.
Okay.
Okay.
And we'll change the date, because like I said, we originally said we would, we wanted to have this done for you by December thirtieth, which is a Friday. You know, then we're gonna move that date out a little bit. And with that dollar figure, it may be something that you can spend a little bit this year.
Well, it would be, let's just cross over to a different date. As far as pushing a date, are we, are we bumping against any deadlines or any issues we're gonna put ourselves into because we're pushing back?
Just the biggest one is the CCMG. But that's gotta be done by the end, end of July. June.
June.
Okay. So we're not, we're not hurting ourselves on this, right? By pushing it back another month?
Colin's gonna be able to answer that better than me, I don't believe so.
Okay, because obviously we could do it, especially if we had to do, especially if we were something like that, but I just. I think it would be a little easier, like I said, if we could do it.
That's my, yeah.
I just want you guys to get what, you know, we've had, we had our hour and a half meeting, we first met, and we just wanna help make sure you guys are getting what you want and.
Well, and obviously, again, it's 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 not a matter of we don't wanna be in the right, because we wanna be in the right. We want people to have access to building, we want people to have access to whatever they, we want the town to be, you know, friendly to all all people. So it's just a matter, we've gotta look at.
Right.
Try to be as fiscally responsible as possible.
Absolutely, if you weren't, you weren't doing your job. Okay, that question to you, can we, instead of making them wait a month to come back, can we make it a motion that they rewrite that at fifteen to do those things? And Carla.
My advice would be you get a finalized contract or a finalized proposal, and that I I just generally don't think it's a good idea trying to go through word by word and rewrite it here at this meeting.
No, no, I don't mean this, but but instead of, I mean, if they could rewrite it by next week, instead of waiting until November, the end of November, almost Thanksgiving, to to get it.
Yeah, I mean, I I would say you probably wanna see the rewritten version so you can look at it, though. But what I think I would worry about is approving a fifteen thousand dollar expenditure on a contract that you haven't, a finalized contract that you haven't seen yet.
On board. I was gonna say Carla could, if it met what we agreed on tonight, I mean, it's not, we're not just gonna approve it, he's gonna have to send it to somebody. And and we all look at it.
What do you think, if I was to to revamp the thing, is it like a week, two weeks, three weeks?
Tomorrow.
I mean, we can have it done by Friday, at the absolute latest.
I mean.
What did, I I don't know that it's gonna make that much difference thirty days from now, really. It it's not gonna, it's not gonna affect anything.
But that was my question to, yeah.
Well, Chris is.
You would still be able to get the items needed for CCMG compliance complete in the original contract at time, and just be additional steps behind, which aren't the.
And so you guys know, the reason I put the December thirtieth date on here initially was thinking that you were gonna just try to put this into the twenty twenty five budget. You know, if you're gonna look at moving some of this into twenty, you know, that, us changing that date, we're gonna hit the deadlines that, you know, the timeline that the government has.
The requirement.
For you guys to, you know, so when you send your paperwork in, yes.
We're going, okay.
Did you wanna speak to the other contract that you sent us on?
Yes, so then the second thing that we said, and this was something that I put together with Eric Burns.
Actually, they have a copy of, a rough copy that we prepared earlier, that has essentially the same thing.
Yeah, so the idea behind this is what I was doing all the work for the city of Lafayette was, and and we're using this in all municipalities that we have contracts with now. When you sign my contract, you're, what's really taking place is I'm signing your contract. You, this contract, however you guys work this, takes precedence over this. These terms and conditions supersede these terms and conditions. This becomes an addendum to this contract, and I've gotta follow what you have in your contract to the letter. And when you read that, especially when you look at the sections eleven, twelve, and thirteen, I think it is, it's Title VI, it's ADA, and it's FHWA twelve seventy three form, which is a fourteen page document that the government has put together, which goes over all the things that I am required to do and all the things that, because before, for you, technically today, for you, if you were to sign this contract today, it's not a valid contract until I supply you with my transition plan and my Title VI policy. And my transition plan is a Title III, says I'm a private entity. For you to hire any companies, if you receive, and this is according to NDOT, Taffany Keys, if you receive one dollar, you receive one dollar in federal monies, I, as an independent contractor consultant, have to supply you with my transition plan and my Title VI policy before you can sign the contract. So when I, if you sign this, when I send you, when I send you, when I sign it and send it to you, that you sign the contract, you will also get a copy of our Title VI and our uh our ADA transition.
So this is, this is something not just for you, it's not just for ADA, it's for any, anybody that we do business with.
Yes.
So they're signing our contract.
Yes.
And their contract is an addendum to ours.
Yeah.
And so it's just an additional.
It's your cover yourself.
It's a layer of protection for the town.
You should be doing that with any public works contract, any any contract with a contractor. There are other provisions outside of the ADA that are, earnings fee shifting.
And when you say contractor, you know, the language with NDOT is, I'm a consultant, but we are, they don't say consultants in the contract, they say contractor. So I am a contractor, so he has anybody that you hire is required to have their transition plan and Title VI policy. And and again, I'm gonna say technically, and this is the stuff that we're gonna start getting into, we're gonna start having conversations, is when you put projects out for quote or for bid, and when they come back, the this contract says that they must apply their information, and if they don't, their bid is not acceptable. So if they're the low bidder on a project, and they don't have a transition plan or Title VI, you're not allowed to accept their bid, and it can be thrown out for that reason. Those are some of the things that will, because it's it's, again, I've been doing this since twenty eleven, so I've been doing this for fifteen years now.
This this isn't a requirement, he just said, he recommended it to us, because he just thought it would be best for.
It's a great idea. My my goal is to cover you guys, not to cover me. My terms and conditions are so much different than what yours are. But again, I have to follow your terms and conditions and give you all those documents, e verification and all that stuff is required by me, so. We just, again, we just wanna do the right thing. BFNS wouldn't have us up here if they knew that we weren't gonna do the right thing. If you knew how many phone calls that I got before October first, I could go through at least a dozen communities that are saying, can you help us? And we put some documents together for those communities so they could get turned in, so they could get the CCMG money for next year, because the deadline was October first for that, for some of the twenty twenty six stuff. And it was a lot, you know, it was just people calling saying, you know, help us out, what can you do, what can you do?
It was a very busy three days for us.
So. Okay.
Okay, so just, when you get that pulled together, send it to me, and I'll get it up to everybody, and I guess.
I drive by here almost every day, so we'll put it together, and then I'll just drop your original copy off to you guys here. I'll drop it off to you, and then you guys talk about it. One suggestion that I'm going to make is, before the next meeting, which you're saying is before Thanksgiving?
Third, third Tuesday of November, yeah.
Okay, so um that, if you have questions, ask, so we can make any modifications we need to before the next meeting. Right?
Eighteenth, November eighteenth.
November eighteenth, seven o'clock here, put that on our calendar.
I gotcha.
That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna give you a card. I'm here to pass one. Emma can give you hers, but she has, like it says, she has a QR code.
I do, I sent Emma the QR code, guys.
I have yours already.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Emma.
Don't worry, I said hi.
I will.
Stay the next one. Are you Rebecca?
Yeah, I'm Rebecca.
Rebecca is here. If you wanna stand up, give me an address, make your presentation, Rebecca.
Um, I appreciate your understanding with my tardiness, my mind decided not to work, and I went to Delphi instead of Dayton, so I'm gonna make a quick reroute. Um, so my name is Rebecca Furney, I am the executive director for the Drug Free Coalition at Tepanou County. Um, and I don't know if you're all familiar with the Drug Free Coalition, but we are a public group that has about thirty five different um entities that come together, so it could be nonprofits, businesses, schools, individuals, um typically those that have been affected by substances. Um, we have monthly public meetings at the Tepanou County Health Department, it's the first Wednesday of every month at four P M., and we bring in special speakers. Um, we also get state funding from ICJI, and we have grant opportunities um in alignment with our Community Collective Plan that's evaluated um each month. And so usually every year, we get to provide funding to about twelve to fifteen different agencies, um supporting people like NAMI, Mental Health, um Conquering Mountains Together, Brianna's Hope, Gateway to Hope. Um, and so today I'm here to talk about the public health crisis of overdose um and how we can work together to try and continue to save the lives of those that um are struggling. In twenty twenty three, Indiana reported there were two thousand two hundred and forty four drug overdose deaths. Um, seventy five percent of those were related to opioids. Um, this is including the crisis of fentanyl that I'm sure many of you have heard about. Um, while this number is high, it's actually a seventeen percent decrease from twenty twenty two, and currently data suggests that in twenty twenty four, we'll see a nineteen percent decrease. Um, in Tepanou County, the numbers reflect this positive trend, we had forty five overdoses in twenty twenty two, it decreased to twenty eight in twenty twenty three, and in twenty twenty four, we had twenty overdoses that resulted in a death. Um, if you're not familiar with naloxone, it's a medication that can reverse opioid overdoses, and it's been instrumental in saving lives and has contributed to the decrease in overdoses that we've seen. Naloxone rapidly binds to opioid receptors in the brain, and it blocks the opioid um effect. Um, and when administered to the individual that is experiencing an overdose, it can allow them to continue breathing and re- regain consciousness um within a matter of seconds or minutes. Um, we'll come in communities similar to Dayton after often find challenges in getting prompt medical attention um or a delay in it because of the time to get here. We're asking to install a nalox box here in Dayton to bridge a gap, and it would be a public box um outside, so it would be available twenty four seven, three hundred and sixty five days a week um to the individuals in Dayton or traveling through Dayton. Currently in Tepanou County, there's twenty boxes, those are all stationed in Lafayette, with three of them in West Lafayette. Um, the closest one here is I U R N at Health Hospital, actually just last week, got theirs up in the emergency room. Um, but that is the closest location to Dayton. Um, naloxone isn't just for people actively using drugs, which is a common misconception. Um, it can save anyone who experiences accidental overdoses from opioids. Um, in Otterburn, we recently saw elderly individuals overdosing. A lot of times they'll take their medication, forget that they've taken it, and take a second dosage. Um, it can impact veterans that are struggling with PTSD, who take pain pills to have an opportunity to find rest at night. We see students who take a pill to be able to stay alert and awake when they're studying, to later find out that that pill was laced with fentanyl. Or it can be something like me, where in two days, it will be the five year anniversary of my husband's death. I was twenty seven when my husband passed away. Apologies. He was three years sober, had a bad night, turned to what he knew. And the heroin was laced with ten times the amount of fentanyl to kill somebody. He unfortunately stopped breathing too long, that three doses of Narcan had no effect on him. And there are many times I wonder if that Narcan was in my house, if he would still be here today. So my request in putting in a nalox box, it's a matter of saving lives, it's not about promoting drug use. It's not just for ourselves, it's not for our neighbors, but it is also for our youth and for our children. In twenty twenty three, the leading age group with emergency department overdoses visits were from ages fifteen to twenty four. With tied for third place, it was children under the age of fourteen. From July sixteenth to October twenty fifth, there were forty nine ER visits in Tepanou County for individuals under the age of eighteen. We're talking about one year olds that have been exposed to opioids, eighteen year olds that are intentionally trying to kill themselves. Every lives matter, and anyone can make a mistake, anyone can relapse or face a crisis. And having Narcan available means that a mistake doesn't take their life. And so I am requesting to install a nalox box completely free of charge, Drug Free Coalition will be covering the expense of the box. The box is slightly larger than a slice, a slice of a piece of printer paper, it sticks out about five or six inches. This is the naloxone that would go inside of the case. The case would be monitored um by me myself, it's completely free, Narcan is provided to us free of charge through overdose lifeline. Um, there is training information inside of here. Narcan is completely harmless to anyone that is not experiencing an opioid overdose. So if somebody was administered this and were not in a state of overdose, it would create no harm to them. We can offer training in Dayton, um as I said, I would fill it, so I would start on a weekly basis, coming to check the box, to see how much is being utilized, and process from there, if it could be biweekly, um or how often it needs to be filled. Um, there is no work on your guys' part, we will cover the maintenance if you prefer on installing the box, if that's something from a liability stance. Stance you would prefer to do, um is fine as well. Some individuals adhere it to their building, some individuals choose to post it on a box, kind of, I give the example, if you've seen like a public free library or a a public food pantry, where it's kind of on the stand, um that's an option as well. Um, but it's no cost to you guys, it's no work on your part, um the only thing we're asking is for you guys to help us save a life.
Is there, is there, did you say it's a lock box?
So it's a lock box in the sense that you push the door up, right? It's a box that you has a door, and it has a little knob, but it does not physically lock, it just cures it, it makes it weatherproof, rain can't get into it, of that nature, but it is completely accessible to anyone to utilize.
Okay, so. Obviously, we would wanna do whatever we could. Do we have any issues about liability or anything, something like this?
Uh, I mean, I think you'd do the same thing that you did with the video camera, if if the council wanted to to do this, you'd do the same thing that you did with the video camera and have a substantially similar encouragement agreement, if that's what you wanted to do. I mean, if you really wanna cover yourselves, that's that's.
Well, that's, that was what was attached to the building, if they were to do a, something like the little library.
That's assuming that it's attached to the building, yeah.
Yeah, so if we, we didn't wanna do that.
So the town doesn't take any, take on any liability with it being out in the open, public can get a hold of it?
Somebody trip over it, you know, I I mean theoretically.
That's the same thing with any step, but I mean.
Yeah.
We're talking about a medication, even though I just mentioned it doesn't really impact anybody who's not currently under the thing, I just always, you know, kid walks down the street, picks one out and decides to go home and play with it, it's not gonna, we're not gonna get sued because somebody wasn't locked or it was eight feet off the ground or something like that, I I, that's fine, I don't know that I'd wanna attach necessarily the building.
That's what I was thinking, I could, if it, if it, put it on a post similar to the the little libraries in the neighborhoods, on a post, something like that, and you and you guys would take care of installing that, just find find a location that that could put it in.
Do you personally uh take care of every one of them you got off the end, West Lafayette?
Nope, the health department is the largest contributor to that, her name's Paige Bennett, she works at Gateway to Health through the health department. They they oversee majority of them, kind of rule of thumb is whoever does the install is who's responsible for overseeing the box. Um, and so um Phoenix Paramedics is another one that has done some installs, um they have one at Hartford, Hartford Automotive. Um, we just got rigs that installed three of them, um there's one in the parking garage at Purdue Campus. Um, we have um obviously Vlum, LTHC, um the health department, um I just shared the hospital installed one. Um, so there's, there's, like I said, twenty currently going on, and we're still continuing to push to install more as we're able.
You guys have like encouragement agreements or anything with folks that nobody's had to do that yet?
Nobody's had us do any kind of agreements, any kind of liabilities, waivers, video cameras, none of that.
I I would say the risk is remote, obviously, the one thing, if if you're not gonna have an agreement in place, I think you certainly wanna confirm with your insurance carrier that in the event that's, you know, it's tipped over and fell on somebody's head, um that. Um, that you're, that's, that's something that would be covered by your insurance. You might have to do a resolution or something like that.
How many bills did you use with the box?
We usually put around twelve. And I do also try and put in, not try, I will put in business cards for additional resources, so. If someone is utilizing the Narcan, we want them to know there's more resources, whether it's an individual personally using it. Or providing it for someone else. Um, a big one that we provide is our re, let's not call it the Hive, but you may have known it as Recovery Cafe in Lafayette. Um, they have funding resources, um, and they have substance resources, mental health. The other one is NAMI. They've recently opened their living room, which is a twenty-four seven crisis center. Um, they also offer QRT, which is their quick response team, so they can actually physically go to the person where they're in crisis. Um, and so those are some good base resources that we can leave in there, so, um, you're offering more than just Narcan.
Just go out the door and get out to the public, out the door and get out to the public, get one of these boxes first of all.
Yeah, great question. So Overdose Lifeline, um, on their website, they have a final oxon map. Um, and so they can go on there, put in their zip code, and so you guys would be a, um, location that would be added. Um, to that website. Um, I'm also working with the Community Action Team, which is an overdose suicide committee through the county's. Um, health department to see how we can continue getting the word out about physical locations. Um, and so we're in the works of creating a postcard bookmark that has a list of addresses. So that as we're at events and in the community, we can distribute that. Um, possibly with a QR code on it, because as I said, we're continuing to try and get these boxes installed.
Do you have a recommendation, Scott, where you think a good location would be for it to be placed?
Here, on the side of the building. I think you're creating problems by creating a separate post someplace. You gotta do locates to, to vary it, when you have something to mow around, it's added install. I think we wanna make it as easily, um. Install, install as we can for their group, and that would be the easiest way. And they could coordinate with Kirk to. Do what, the, the mountain, we've got a brick structure, so I would suggest next to the back door myself.
What, what are your objections to having it on the building?
Um, it's an old building, I don't know, I just, old historical stuff, I just have, I, I have issues with it. Drill through the brick, yeah.
Kinda lean that way as well. I mean, I would assume we put it on the back park, not that somebody just get to it without blocking traffic or having to worry about a vehicle being hit or something like that.
Yeah, we did just do recent, I mean, I totally understand your hi- historical building, but we did just do an install on the West Lafayette Library, which is a brick building, so. It is an option, we do have maintenance available to install on a brick building, but I understand the concern of it being a historical building as well.
Have you seen much in the way of vandalism or anything like that?
No.
Hey Scott, you said, you said by the back door, back here?
That's what I would say, on that side of the building, so people can pull up and not be, you know, advertised. It's not safe to stop out here.
Right.
That's a parking lot and.
And, and then I will be checking it weekly, so I mean, if for some reason someone was to drop one and I pick it up. Again, it's not gonna harm anyone. If something became loose on the box or if it was on a post, that's something.
Are these things that people take to, to have a home?
Yeah, so.
That's, that is the idea?
So home is a great option for people that are, that are using a prescribed opioids. We always recommend a glove box. Um, you know, if you're out driving or you're visiting a Walmart. And you interact with somebody, you have it on you. A lot of students, we recommend backpacks and then. People that are large advocates for Narcan carry them in their purses. I have eleven in my car right now, so. I mean, you never know who you're gonna interact with. You never know at what point, you know, that you might find someone that you're concerned. Um, with an overdose, and so home, cars, backpacks, purses.
So you're actually encouraging people to, to take?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I, I think, I think we're agreeing, it sounded like we agree that we, we should.
Of course.
Be involved, it's just a matter of, we've just gotta figure out where we wanna put it. My only concern with putting it on the, by the back doors, somebody's gotta walk through that planter to get to it. Then we get into tripping, falling and that kinda stuff, um. I don't know if that little enclosure around the trash cans would support its weight, that would be something right there as well. Doesn't hit the building, it's on the, the, that little enclosure, but we can. We can look into finding a spot for it, so if we.
Yeah.
I think the, we, I would make a motion that we go further with it, go further, further with the project and try to find a good location. Uh, with you and Kurt, our, our top manager, and get one installed.
I'll second that.
Alright.
We really appreciate it, appreciate your support and you really missed to help us in this mission. I will work with the marshal to get the correct contact information. And I look forward to getting this installed for you guys. Thank you guys very much.
Wait, motion, motion made by Steve, seconded by Rocky.
We have to vote, it's just a.
Okay, I get, sometimes you get a second and I think you're done, so.
We pretty much are.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Carla?
Yes.
Okay, nice.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Um, like I said, I would just reach out to the town, make sure that they, they need a resolution or something like that, so it's covered.
Can you, can you take care of that, Cindy?
I'm writing it down.
Alright. Finally got it. Uh, so the next thing is, uh, McAllister Fire Suppression, uh, Tap-On. So, uh, kind of backstory on all this, uh, McAllister has been putting an addition onto their building. This has been going on, ongoing project for about a year now, maybe longer, something like that. At some point, um. Something changed. And they, when, when this started, there was no fire suppression system that was designed or. Thought to be needed. Somewhere along the line, some, somewhere, that changed. So then the question became, how are they gonna go about getting, getting this, uh, fire suppression system? Uh, tapped on to, uh, the water line, cause they had to bring six, six-inch line in. So, uh, what they wanna do is they wanna tap on to our main line, our twelve-inch line running down US Road there. And then bring, bring it over to their system. Uh, we approached them and said, while you're doing that, uh, we need to loo- we've been doing the water study. And there's a water looping situation there that we would like to accomplish at the same time. Um, so we discussed that and, um. Knowing that McAllister may not be greatly in favor of that, but, uh, we, we came to a. A conclusion here, and what they said was that, uh. You know, what they would like to do is to donate land for water looping along the, um. East side of their property, so when we do go to make that water looping situation, that would be much easier and. The land would be no- donated to us. Uh, so what have, what have I missed on this, Chris, anything?
I can.
Yeah.
So, Chris, let me add about Fairman Seifert. Uh, Mark kinda gave you the background on the McAllister project. We reviewed the site plans that they had, uh, proposed about a year ago to work through that and make sure it was compliant with your town standards and development guide. As they were building and getting final permits for that, they received notification from the state and fire marshal that fire suppression systems. Were going to be required on that addition, so then they, McAllister went through the process of determining. What that system would need to look like, what kinda size pipe would be needed and where that feed could come from. The current, um. Water line that feeds the building is not sufficient to provide fire protection flows. And the nearest main with significant enough capacity to provide that flow, uh, is that twelve inches, Mark said, that goes down US Road. So, McAllister, uh, proposed a tap on that main with a six-inch line extended to the building. Uh, to provide that fire flow. It's my understanding that that pipe is in construction now. There is a representative from McAllister here who could answer further questions on, uh, what that, what that, um. Suppression system looks like, but I'll say from BFNS's side, this is a pretty standard, uh, need for a building like this. Pretty standard, uh, procedure with the proposed extension and fire suppression system that they are proposing to build on this. As Mark said, with the water study that BFNS is currently performing for you. We've been looking at different opportunities within the town to provide loops on your water main. And looping the Deerfield subdivision back over to that twelve-inch water main, uh, feeding all of town. Is one of the proposed projects that we have identified. Um, we had looked at a route that could cut straight across through McAllister's property that would require an easement from them. And generally, that's at their discretion to grant an easement for something like that. Um, as Mark said, there is another route that is a little bit longer, but not so much longer as to be. A really large difference in terms of cost and, uh, constructability to do that, so. We've had discussions with the McAllister group on, um, what that later future loop could look like and they have expressed. Uh, I can't speak for them, but our general impression is that they've expressed a willingness to cooperate with the town on those efforts in the future. Time had a little bit there, but are there any questions I can help answer further?
I, one, just to add one thing, we actually achieved or obtained approval from the state without sprinklers. We got permits, we started construction, had the first round of inspections, everything was fine. They got a new inspector in from the state. He walked out there, it's the only section of the whole building that's sprinkled. But you, I couldn't, I can't fight it, cause I've been working on it for a year, so we, that's what drove this. I mean, obviously, it was another four hundred thousand dollar expense for me to sprinkle that section of the building. And that being the only sprinkled section, it was, um, a large cost, so.
Basically, the state changed their requirements on you during construction.
Another one of those moving targets.
Uh, we, we are, um, we'll do, there's an easement out front already that goes to, goes road, drive, road, drive. And we'll, we'll, you know, we've offered to donate equipment as well as provide the easement down. The, the property line to give you access for the, for the new water line that you've gotta do when you do the loop, so. We like to be part of the community and we're willing to work with you when you get there.
So what are we looking at, I mean, what, what?
I just, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that we allow them to go ahead and do their tap-on. Uh, to get their fire suppression up and going. Uh, really wanted to make it happen at this meeting. Well, there's really no reason for not, not making it happen at this point. And, uh, winter's coming on and they need to get, they need to get things wrapped up on their end, so.
Well, my only concern is that the, the donation of land is, is. It's kinda like the sidewalk thing, we're, we're making a decision based on something we, and, and don't take this as I don't believe you'll do it, it's just a. Um, we're trying to, you know, dotterize across our teeth, do we need to have some kind of an agreement that says, hey, we do this, you do that, or? I mean, what, what's our?
Well, you're gonna be providing tap fees all along that road.
Right.
Right, so if, for him to draw an easement, he could do very quickly, you've got a site plan, there's, there's, I mean, you can get the easement done. And I can sign it, and that way, you know, you always have the right to the easement. And so I, if I were in your shoes, I would release them to do the easement. And then we'll sign it, and then it doesn't have to happen immediately and.
Yeah, I just want to, I just wanna make sure we've got whatever we need to have down the road to cover.
Yeah, I mean, I think you could prove it subject to review of the necessary documents.
I'll go ahead and jack something. I'm one of the ones that's had a lot to be a meeting with, uh, McAllister down there, and like I said. Opened my eyes on a lot of, a lot of stuff that, uh, actually wasn't favorable for them. Wasn't favorable for us necessarily either, so I think, in my opinion, we probably owe it to them. To let them do what they're suggesting you wanna do.
Okay. There is, there, there is, just, there's one other part of this, uh, and I don't think it's gonna make any difference, but. Generally, when we tap on, there is, um, a meter that's associated with the water use. Now, of course, this is for fire suppression, hopefully, they never use a drop of water out of this thing, alright? But, at, at the same time, uh, the connection point from. From that line, they're putting it in, and I think that they should be responsible for it, not just. Not just McAllister, but anybody who does that type of thing. And I don't think we have that necessarily in our development guide at this point.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't think we do, but just to let you know, I'm, I'm fairly certain we will be putting something like that into our development guide. I didn't, I didn't think it'd make a bit of difference to you, but in the, in that case, it's not. Generally, up to the meter is where we take ownership. We have ownership, then past the meter to them is where they have ownership. In this case, it would be from the tap-on to them, they would have ownership of that line. In case in fifty years, something happens to that line.
I won't be here, so it would help me somebody else.
But when we had the main break over there, we, when we were there, we, the photos we looked at, it looked like somebody had tried to tap that line at some point. And therefore weakened that line, um, which was part of that problem, but I don't, yeah. Again, I, if we can, we can pass, get them back to work and, and pass something with, with, with the, uh. What did we mention?
Subject to the review.
Thank you, subject to review or subject to that other piece being put into place, I'm good with that.
So I'll make a motion that, uh, we allow them to go ahead and, and then. How, how, was this way to word this?
Subject to the review of the final documents.
Subject to review of the final documents for easements, so.
I'll second that.
Alright, motion made by myself and seconded by Steve.
Nicole, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Favorable.
Mark?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So I guess from my understanding, are you asking us to work up documentation for easement procurement through here?
Need to make a motion.
Well, we, I don't have a proposal for you to.
What I can do in the meantime is I'll send you a letter tomorrow. You can affix it to this. It'll tell you what we're gonna provide to you in the future within easement. You know, and I'll put a date on the easement of probably June of next year, just. I don't, cause I don't know when you're gonna have the money to, to approve it, but I'll put it out there, you can leave it open-ended, I don't, you know. But I'll tell you that I'll guarantee that I'll meet the standards, I'll put the meter in, and we'll sign the easement over, subject to when the, the, the council meets it.
That's fine. Yeah, I just wanna get you back up and running, get you back to work.
I tell you, McAllister has. They have done a fine job with everything they're doing out there, I mean, everything they wanna do. They've really been trying to stay in contact with Kirk and everybody, and, uh. They've really done a first-class job with everything out there, so.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Need to make a motion.
I think you need to, aren't you gonna generate the proposal first?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think he needs to generate proposal first and then at the next meeting.
Cool.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh. Mr. O'Keefe?
Hey. Um, my name's Michael O'Keefe, Vice President of External Affairs, Surf Frontier Communications for Indiana, Michigan and Ohio. Pleasure to be with you tonight to share, um, some information regarding our deployment of our fiber optic. Uh, to the home network in Dayton. Um, we're currently placing our network in, um. Lafayette East and as a, as an extension of that project, we're coming into Dayton. Um, where our copper, copper lines are right now as well, so, um. We're, we're deploying our fiber optic to, to the home network, really across, you know, all of our exchanges in Indiana, Michigan and Ohio. A little behind the curve, there's people that have beat us into the communities that we serve. Um, but, uh, you know, we're, we're aggressively using our own money, uh, from a company perspective to upgrade. Uh, our network. Um, we have DSL product out there, maybe some, some of you have in your home. Or some folks have, uh, in the Dayton area, but it's just not keeping up. It's a, it's on, on copper, copper is older than anybody in this room, uh, some of the stuff that we have out in our network. And, uh, fiber optic does position us to, uh, um, be where we need to be for the future, so. So wanted to talk to you real quick about the product, about some of our network elements, our high-level architecture, and our customer communications. And then there's a map. I did send a presentation out. It was later this afternoon. Let's see, when do you have it? So, you know, I'll kind of go slide by slide. I'll go through it very, very quickly and then you can ask any questions at the end. So after the presentation, I will send the town manager a contact list detailed, because this is one of the things we found at a meeting with all the communities, is we haven't provided a good contact list for any issues you have in town related to our facilities. And we want to make sure that you have that going forward, any emergencies and any questions during the build, those kind of things. You'll have a detailed contact list. So slide one, basically, the product is fiber optic all the way to the side of the house. And then we go in cap fiber or, or coax to a very fast modem. So the speeds are two hundred megas of base speed up to seven gig. When I started this two years ago presenting to town councils, I was saying three gig. So, and then with five gig last year, seven gig. Why anybody needs seven gig is beyond me. But the, just with software updates, we're able to, or, you know, changing out some electronics, we're able to up the speed of our product and it will keep up with anything going forward. It's the speed of life, basically. You can think of how fast and can you send it, how fast can you receive it? That technology's improving all the time. So very, very fast speeds. It's a symmetrical, symmetrical product, so same upload, download speeds. It's biz open, it's available for business, business and residential customers. It's very, very affordable for, for customers who have market share is, is really high and everywhere we're rolling it out as far as customer demand. It is a voice and data product only, not TV. So there's plenty of options for video these days, Apple TV, Hulu Plus. We have a partnership with YouTube TV. So if, if somebody wants, you know, a television channel where they can get all the network stations, but also any, any other add-ons, someone's like Alacart. You just pay for whatever video you want to add to your data connection. Very reliable. So I've been around fiber, I, I used to run operations for Verizon in Texas, Florida, in the Midwest. And everywhere where we run that fiber product, trouble reports just dropped off. I mean, unless you cut it, it, it works. Rain doesn't affect it unless it didn't affect it like it does copper. So it's a very, very reliable product and, and again, very, very fast. So if you, you know, and again, it, it meets the needs of the future. More and more demand, people working from home, telemed, remote education is all really, really important to residents now and citizens now. So it, it meets all, all those needs. We don't have a central office in Dayton. Most of our area that's in, in the Dayton area is covered from our Lafayette East exchange. So there will be a fiber underground and our conduit systems that come into town and then it will go out from, from that location, which is a little different from, you know, most of other areas where we have a central office right in town. But we will come in and make connections. We'll put three distribution hubs out in various locations. We're going to pass five hundred and fifty customer locations, we call, in, in the Dayton area. But again, because we're not the, what they call ILEC, income of local exchange carrier in Dayton, these areas are served out of Lafayette. There are some areas in Dayton downtown, or town, that won't be covered because they're not our areas, they're not where we are today with our copper product. Everywhere where we do have copper, we will put the fiber in. And we, we follow the architecture of the copper. So if it's aerial today, we go aerial. If it's buried today, we go buried. This build is about a fifty-fifty mix. So fifty percent of those five hundred and fifty homes are going to be served aerial. Buried, customer intrusive or easy. We basically overlash the fiber right to our copper cables that are existing today. So we'll not, we don't have to put up new strand. We already have joint pool agreements with the power company on poles. We don't have to worry about clearances and separations and those kind of things. So it's very quick and easy. The buried portion of the build is directional boring. You guys are very familiar with directional boring. I would like to get a name of the, the contact person for our state construction manager to reach out to. So when we do start construction, he can make sure that they have talked and, and met and understand what we're doing and, and make sure that we're, you know, not overtaxing. One of the things he, he stresses is not overtaxing your locators, your, your, your folks that take care of your underground. He'll work with you very, very closely to make sure he manages that portion of the build. But again, aerial is very, very quick and easy. The buried is, is where everybody has, you know, a little concern. There are some pictures in there of some of our network elements that are going in. Regarding customer communications, we, we attempt to try to make sure customers know who's doing the work, where we're doing the work in a timely manner, not putting up notices and, and showing up months later. But right before we're going to be doing the work, we place door hangers on customers' doors. Customers just think it's junk and they throw it away. So, I mean, the, the actual read rate, we don't really know of, of what we put out there. Some people don't use the front door, they drive into the garage and go in that door. But some people use it. It's, it's, it's a way to deflect calls coming into the, the town hall if somebody has an issue. It's got an eight hundred number on it, a QR code that takes a customer through the QR code or the URL, what they can expect from a construction perspective. So aerial, it, it shows them what aerial construction, what, what we do to place the fiber. Buried, it shows what we do to place the buried. Also has a, a number for an internal customer complaints team. That number, it, you know, we get back with it within the customer within twenty-four hours. We own that complaint from the time it's open till it's closed. We track the quality of the crews via that number so we know, you know, who's working there. We can, we can address any issue. And we can share that information with whoever in, in the town is interested, right? If, if they're, if you think that, hey, maybe we're getting too many complaints, we can share the log with you. How many are open, how long have they been open, what are, what are the types of complaints? But we're pretty good about closing those very, very quickly. We're doing this in hundreds of areas, all across Michigan, all across Indiana, all across Ohio. So very experienced crews out here. So again, fiber drop, we don't place drops to the house till the customer orders the product. And when we place a hub, we place a feeder fiber out, generally go northeast, south, and west. When we go to one direction, we finish that area and we turn them off. So we don't wait till everything's built and flip the switch. As we build, we place the hubs and distribution. We turn it up and those customers are notified, direct mail generally, that you're eligible for our product. And then word about spreads, but. So again, that's kind of it in a nutshell. You can see on the map, there's probably some areas you see are missing. That's again, because that's, those are not our customers today, with copper. And, and we're not going out of, we call franchise. We, we're not going out of franchise. We're staying where our copper customers are today. So what questions would you have?
So you're purely on this side of the railroad track? You won't be going into Baker's Farm or down Dayton Road?
Uh, yeah, if that's what the map shows, yeah.
Yeah, map shows everything stops on this side of the track.
Yeah.
The copper system you've got in place, is it being shut down or is it still operational as well as the fiber?
It's going to stay operational. My mother, I'm, I'm native of Lafayette. My mother-in-law lives by our cove down there in Lafayette. And she still has a landline phone, right? So there are people with copper landline phones. And even though we give her a cell phone, she really wants that landline phone. It is battery backed up from our central office, so it's different. It is, if you lose power in your house, she's got an old princess phone plugged into the wall. So it will work regardless if your power's out. And she wants that dependability. So customers can keep the copper.
I just wondered from the point of view, how much stuff is going to be hanging from the poles?
Yeah, no, we will.
Removing the copper and put the fiber, that's like, okay, so we're not, we're not gat, we're not getting another set of lines or anything like that, but.
It's so, you know, fiber's so thin, spinning that, you, you don't even notice. It's, it's hardly any, any thicker than what's up there. And actually, you know, I mean, we've got some, of course, some broken lashing wire, some siding spans that get taken care of when we, when we put the new network up. Now, eventually, we would like to get away from the copper cable and remove some of those boxes. So, you know, we're going to pull the copper out of the ground, maybe the underground, but not into conduits, but not out of the ground. But we could remove boxes that are out there both and open, those kind of things. In some cases, you know, we are able to do that if there are any customers working anywhere down those lines. So, and any drops, if we, if you order service and you have a aerial drop into your house that's copper now, that will come down and fiber will go up. So that's part of an install, so there is a little cleanup to that.
So you, you realize we, we've got a fiber system in town already, right?
Yeah, yeah, I, like, this happens a lot. I mean, I've done a lot of these presentations. In some cases, we're the third fiber provider coming in. The competition's great, right? And I don't, I, I don't know what the pricing is for your competition, but two hundred mags, actually five hundred mags right now, we're selling for twenty-nine ninety-nine. Now, it's the first year to go up, I think, twelve dollars in the second year. But that's pretty darn competitive from what we've seen in most areas.
Well, yeah, so obviously, competition is good. But from our standpoint, there is, there was a lot, a lot of disruption when the other fiber was, was put in this town.
Yeah, we, we find that everywhere we're going because everywhere we go, the companies don't have joint pool agreements. I mean, so fifty percent of our network is going to just be right near, not even, no ground's going to be broken.
Well, it, it will be when you run that fiber to the house. And that's going to require, it's going to require our guys to do the locate every time that happens.
Well, we're aerial, we'll go aerial, there'll be an aerial drop going in unless the customer wants to pay for a burial.
Okay. Well, if you do, if you do a burial, then they'll have to, we'll have to locate. But all of these places that you're going to, that you want to run this in the ground, you know, we got, we got a part-time guy doing this stuff. And there's a whole lot of other things going on in this town at the same time.
Yeah.
And it's, it's, it's going to be overwhelming. And there's really no, there's really no great.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, maybe the, the upside would be to the customer, and I understand that. But there's going to be a lot of downside to the, to this town, to, to the functioning of everything else. Because this person has to do not just, not just service, just you.
Right.
Everything else that's going on. It's pretty much a full-time job already without this happening. So, I mean.
So again, Todd will work with, I mean, who, who, who would be the contact for our construction?
Well, that, that would be Kirk, but he's, he's only, he's limited to what he can do.
No, yeah.
You're telling me that this guy's going to work with him.
Yeah.
But this guy is not going to be the guy that's going to be doing the locates.
Yeah.
Because he doesn't have, he doesn't have the information to do that. And I don't know how we bridge that.
Well, how'd you get through the last one?
Well, we lost, we lost one of our guys because of, I think, part of the reason.
Okay.
So, so, and then we can't have that happen.
Yeah, we will work with you and, and we will, we'll go slow. I mean, we're not going to bring, you know, three or four boring rigs in. We would go slow and again, provide a plan of we're going to be going this way this week.
But that doesn't, but that doesn't count for everything else that's going on in town. You're doing what you want to get done.
Yeah.
But we got other people, we got other things that are happening here.
Yeah.
So you're going, you're, I mean, you're sitting here telling me that you're going to tell me what you're going to do. You know, you're going to be doing this then, so anticipate it. But the thing is, you don't know what we're doing. So I don't, I don't, I don't know we can accomplish.
Well, so the good news is that these crews are also working in Lafayette. So if you're busy that day, we can re, just redirect them to work in Lafayette, so.
Yeah.
We have a lot of flex. It, we, you know, if we weren't working in Lafayette and this was an isolated community, that'd be a big problem because we can't have a crew just idle, right? But because Lafayette's right here, we have tremendous flexibility. So if you, if you're a locate guy that's busy that day and he tells us, we can redirect them to work in Lafayette. So I, I don't think it's going to be as big a problem as what you're thinking.
What's your?
Because of the flexibility.
What are you, what are you thinking about starting?
We'd like to start with the feeders, the feeder fiber coming in, in Q4, probably, you know.
This year?
Yeah, November, December.
I don't.
But, but the distribution wouldn't be till Q1 to start.
Even that's a problem.
Yeah, so.
So.
Again, the feeder, most of the feeder is in our conduit systems, no locate necessary. We're, we're, we're checking the ducts now to make sure we have, you know, the availability and the ducts aren't plugged to be able to pull our fiber through, through the ducts. But that doesn't require any, any work on your part.
But if they are plugged?
If they are plugged, we may have to dig it up to fix it up.
My question is, is I have three of these hubs in my front yard now. Is it going to have another one I got to work around?
So the, the hub, there's only three of those in the entire build. So those are placed at strategic locations where we can get out with our distribution fiber. So, and, and when the plans, Pierce Engineering, Pierce, Pierce is our engineering firm. And they may have already sent some plans to you. But we will work with you on those hub locations. They'll send you a picture, basically, of where the hubs are going to be located from, from Google Maps, Google Earth. And it, you know, we can move those one way or another a little bit to make sure that it's not an eyesore for someone. Our technicians need to be able to get to those hubs in a safe manner so we don't put them, you know, at, at a cross street.
I'm guessing that's my front yard because that's where they put them all. And they're never put in that nice. They're, they're like crooked, half in the ground, half out of ground. It's just, for me, I don't.
Now, I don't know if you have a, do you have a hub? I mean, our copper hubs are probably.
I got three of those in the ground.
This big.
Right down there on thirty-eight. There's three of them in the ground and there's the panels, two of the panels sticking up.
Yeah, the, you know.
Yeah, these are small, the fiber, all the fiber's stuff is small.
Experience is that when the contractors come through, all promises go out the window. Because all this stuff's going to be real nice and neat, but the reality is it just doesn't happen that way. Because we've lived through it.
My understanding was when ATT and I think Maury came through, that even then, Mark Harlow was concerned about how much wire was being pulled through everything underground, that there was barely room for what they had then.
Yeah.
So that I'm not even sure that you, that there's room for it.
Yeah, we follow, we're, we're.
That was several years ago.
Yeah, where our buried copper is today is we, is kind of where we follow, right? That's, that's the, the routes we follow.
So there's no new, there's no new buried in any easements? There's nothing new going to be buried in any easements?
Oh, no, yeah, we're putting, we're putting the fiber where the copper is. You know, where, where the copper goes, I mean, the, the routes the copper goes, right? Whatever side of the street or.
But what I'm saying is, there's no, there's no route that there is not currently copper?
No, no. Unless there's a new subdivision. I mean, if there's a new subdivision that we did not go in.
Not on this side of the track.
Yeah. Because, I mean, probably the last five. Yeah. Because, I mean, probably the last five years, we, new subdivision, we went up like copper because nobody wanted ESO. Or voice, for that matter.
Is this an option?
It's what an option.
Is, is allowing this to happen an option?
Um, where, where is it? Is it going into an already existing easement that Frontier owns and has the?
Well, no, rightaways. It goes, it goes in the rightaways where our copper cable is today.
Okay. Um, I mean, I, I believe Dayton has, at least in the town rightaway, they have a, an ordinance in place for street cuts, but.
But they're quite, we do.
So, I mean, I don't know that you guys deal with and comply with those ordinances when you're.
We would, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, to my knowledge, that's, that's sort of what's in place right now for dealing with these, these sorts of things when anybody's cutting into the rightaway in the street is, is the street cut ordinance.
And if, I mean, if you're really concerned about damage, I mean, many communities request a surety bond.
I would, I would say generally that, um, the municipality has the right to regulate their, their rightaway. You know, do that by, by ordinance, so.
Yeah. Our, uh, our, our town manager, he's not, he's not here tonight. And, uh, I really think before anything starts on this, we really need to consult with him and find out.
What's his name, by the way? I just.
Kurt, Kurt Delzer.
Is he, can I get a phone number for him, or?
Uh, you can just call Town Hall.
Okay, alright. What are the questions? Again, we have lots of flexibility with Lafayette being right here and West Lafayette we're building with this town right now, so, um, you know. We could slow roll to make sure we're not top of the taxes.
Good.
So. I'll make sure the construct, the state construction manager knows. And it, and we'll get, we'll get a meeting before we start any work, uh, with Kurt. And, and make sure that, you know, from a construction standards, we have, again, very comprehensive construction standards, which we'll share.
Well, so it sounds like to me what, what you would probably do is, is talk to Kurt, because he's gonna be a guy involved in it. But the other thing would be to try to give us an idea of how much is gonna be run through existing conduit? And how much actual digging or, or boring you're gonna have to do?
Yeah.
Cause that sounds like that's the concern is, is with the boring, obviously. Um, and I don't know how we, we do that. It would be a conversation for Patrick and us to have would be, you know, when you're done, any boxes that are above ground, um, need to be done so in such a way that they're, not an eyesore for anyone nearby, but the other thing, and, and to, to Mike's point, I mean, when you drive around town and you see phone boxes and cable boxes, things like that, they're askew, they're half buried and half not buried. And, and it look, and, and it makes the town look kinda junky. Um, and I know it's not you necessarily, but it's, it's one of the concerns of town, cause it does, and it's not ours to maintain. It's not like I go out there and say, okay, well, let's dig this up and re, and re-level it. Um, and to Mark's point, I know when, uh, a gas line was recently moved near my property, um, what they left me was a, a mess and a big expense for me to fix because, um, they couldn't be bothered to come back out and, and, you know, re-level it and, and everything else. So, um, that, I think those are our concerns, but, um, I think the first step would be talk to Kurt and, and give us an idea. Hey, look, fifty percent or eighty percent of this is gonna be run through existing conduit or aerial, so you're not, we're not gonna really, uphill, we're not gonna do anything that's gonna require locates or require us to do that. Or hey, look, ninety percent of it's gonna be us redigging new stuff so that we have an idea of what we're looking at.
So the other lesson learned was from this last, uh, install of fiber was that we had several sewer lines that were compromised when they did the directional boring. I, I got pictures of, of the fiber line going through the sewer lines. And we didn't realize that, that, that was just, the, when we found it, it was kind of a freak occurrence that we found it. It makes me wonder how many other setups, how many other ones we've got compromised out there, which is, is definitely a problem.
Yeah, that's, uh, yeah, that's.
So it, it may be that we're gonna have to camera every one of the lines, every, every sewer line after you've, if you, if you're boring through there.
Well, again, um, we'll work with you on depth. If you know the depth of your lines, your taps now, I mean, we can, the, the plans come out at thirty-six inches, but, you know, we, we like to go at least twenty-four, but we can go twenty-four if need be. Um, you know, we'll work with you on that to make sure we're not hitting anything.
I guess what we've found is that a lot of information has not been entered, uh, as well as we would like it to have been on a lot of these things. Uh, and a lot of the stuff is put in a long time ago, so it's hard to say.
Yeah. Well, again, I mean, if, if you're interested, Kurt's the, the person in a bond, right? I mean, for any damages that, uh, may occur, um, that's, uh.
It, it's, it's great to have the, the security of knowing that if something happened, that there's gonna be some money to take care of.
Yeah.
The problem is, it's not, it's not, you, you don't want it to happen, period, because.
I agree.
Now you're spending a lot of time messing around with all these other things. When, you know, we run kinda hand to mouth anyhow. Which is, is good, that's how government should run. But we keep on having things added to us.
I heard a lot of that today.
It's a problem.
Yeah.
It's a problem. You guys are in this because you're here to make money. That's, that's what you're doing this for, okay? So, uh, yeah. I guess we're just gonna have to see what happens.
Well, I tell you, I mean, again, competition is good and your customer, your, your citizens will thank you for having the option because, um, I would, I would imagine it's quite a bit lower than your, what other options you have. So.
But you said you just have data and, uh.
Yes, data, data.
Poisoned data only?
Again, we have a, we have partnership with YouTube TV. I've had it at my house for, I think.
But it's not TV.
Four years, it's TV. No, I mean, the product's not TV.
Right.
But you can get any kind of TV program you want by subscribing to, you know, Apple TV, Hulu Plus, YouTube TV. Ruku, I mean, there's just lots of options for customers.
Good.
They can pretty much do what they want, so.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you again. Alright, break. Couple minute break. Then the real meeting starts.
Can we get, I wanna get the, after, so that you're talking about, I wanna have somebody here check it out. Where is it? So you citing up numerous boxes, where is it?
Sixty-nine twelve, State Road thirty-eight East. Lafayette, Indiana.
Yeah.
But it's right down the street there. It's eleven oh seven Lafayette Avenue.
Okay, we'll check it out. And, I mean, if there's something that we can move, we'll see if we can move it. And straighten it up.
I don't, I don't know about it.
Jack, I might have to put my sweater on. I'm cold. I'm gonna turn that on.
Had all the long stuff here on the, there's a lot of, some of it's important. That's important, but that's pretty good.
Narcan thing's a good, good thing for hogs, that's good, guys are doing that, I think. That's sad about her. Husband, I can't imagine.
Excuse me.
Said burn in the old midnight oil?
I hope not. Town manager, keep your report quick tonight.
Very same. That's what I'm calling robes, rolls. Who's the? Who's the fiber net provider in town now? Was it Comcast?
I think Com- I'm not sure Comcast is, Lilbury, uh, Lilbury. I know AT&T came through, but I don't know if that was phone only or. I, I really, I really don't remember. I remember AT&T came through, I remember Lilbury came through and Duke was doing something and we got CCMG doing lots. Carl was here.
What?
It was, it was making chaos.
Yeah.
The candy lady.
Said, take some passes in the right on. I got mine.
In my, in my towel.
Towel.
Well, it looked like towel.
The way it was hanging, it, like, all I saw was what looked like.
Just so thrilled.
That's to hear why you have a towel rack.
Patrick, you should see my office running on.
Is it clean? Mine is not, so, but mine, I got paper everywhere. Oh, nice.
I'll have to check it out.
Oh, yeah, low standards. Is it clean?
Is it clean?
Yeah, exactly.
It is, actually.
Yeah, that's good, that's good. Bro, give it a call.
Give it a little bit of time and the paper will start to stack up.
You have any chocolate in it?
Patrick, they brought in a highly qualified painter to take that wall, like, I heard that painter was still dying.
Oh, I just, I thought you were in.
Hey, when I was at the Navy, they wouldn't let me paint any higher than the deck plates when I'm down.
I got some Tootsie Rolls. What will you give me for a Tootsie Roll?
Oh, here.
I do have.
I took two of you and I won.
Those sugar babies are good.
That's not really, that's not any chocolate.
You know, this is big enough. Wait, there was a canary, nobody.
It started at Rocky, we weren't here.
Pass it back.
Don't break my desk.
Pass it back around the horn.
Leave the room and then he cries, cause he left the room.
Okay.
I was gonna go in her office, but she locked it.
Alright, folks, let's get this going. Rocky?
Yeah, sir.
You're on.
This table, I'll order the, uh, utilities to report meeting. I don't believe we need to take a tender skin since we already taken it. Uh, do I have anything from the attorney?
Uh, I do not, unless anybody's got other questions for me.
Anybody have questions for attorney? Moving on, um, I don't have anything to report on, on missing water valves, okay? But I do have something to report on, on the spare phase converter coil. I'm sure y'all got one. According to Kurt, he thinks it'd be a great idea if we had a spare phase, uh, converter if in stock, in case something was to happen to that list taken over here on, uh, um.
Deerfield.
Yeah, modern Deerfield. At any rate, uh, well, he got a quote. And the quote is like six thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars, okay? And, uh, his point is, is what we currently have in there is like thirty years old. If something was to happen and we'd have to call somebody in, we could be spending in excess of fifty grand, you know, to get it taken care of. Whereas if we had this, he could, he could change it out, we'd be up and running, wouldn't have any problems. So he wanted to, let me bring that up soon, he.
You know, I mean, I remember when I was on, the cemetery one we always had trouble with, and I believe we, I thought we had a backup for that one. Are they not the same motors, three-phase?
No.
No.
Deerfield's a single-phase.
Okay.
Um, and so we, when, when I, cause I talked to Kurt about it as well, um, right after we had the breakout there. Uh, and to switch it to three-phase, which is really what we should do, is a small fortune.
Right.
Um, so then the, the way to really secure that station, so make sure we don't ever end up in a bad situation, was to drop a second, you know, have a spare single-phase system, uh, or a single-phase box ready to go if, God forbid, the things fail or when it fails. Um, because we, when we looked at, he looked into putting three-phase out there, and then now you're talking Duke and trying, and basically rebuilding the whole station. Um, and it was a, a lot of money.
Again, I don't know if this is something we wanna try to, uh, put one of the most, the seed bean in, in past, or if it's something we wanna.
Well, if we're gonna get, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do it, we have to do it that way.
I just meant we need to, neither of that one, you know, I just, I mean, don't, you know, if, if we wanna proceed with it, I'll go ahead and move it. We have allocated sixty-six hundred forty-eight dollars to, uh, purchase a, a spare, uh, converter.
Sixty-six forty-eight? I'll second. Motion, Nate Buck?
Well, also, yeah, I guess I'm confused. So are, is this a, is this, is not a second?
No, no, no. Look at the one, look at the one that says Kirby risk.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they're not for the same thing?
No.
So we only have one quote?
Yes.
Par, we could, we could get any, we could look for another quote, I suppose.
That's what you wanna do, I mean, I'm.
Does it have to be done today?
I don't know, who, DJP or? I don't, I wouldn't have a clue. Carry them or? I wouldn't have a clue.
That would be a question for Kurt.
Kurt would have to address, I'm sure. You know, I suppose it, yeah, just have Kurt's one.
Look into, into prices and if this is the best one, then this is the best.
Obviously, I don't just pick this thing going out in the next month.
Right. No, this isn't, just trying to get out ahead of it.
Yeah. So, that's what, that's why I said, what's that early, you know, so.
I think, yeah, it probably would be a good idea to see if I get another quote.
Okay.
So you wanna retract your, retract your motion?
So, yeah.
You didn't make it?
Huh?
You didn't make one?
I'll retract it. I'll retract.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, you can just go ahead and withdraw your motion.
I will draw my own.
Yeah, if you're gonna do it, another quote.
Alright, moving on. Same list station. Okay. Set, set between two houses, one's on Harrison Circle, one's on Fifty-Fall. Okay, there's a tree problem there, major tree problem there that, uh, needs to be removed, needs to come down, okay? Kurt has, uh, had a letter, wrapped it up, took it to the homeowners on each side of it, and they said go ahead and take it down. They wouldn't sign it though, but they said go ahead and take it down, okay? Did get two quotes on that. One from TNT Tree Service for thirty-nine hundred. And, uh, one from, uh, another tree service that we've always used, elevated a tree service that we've used in the past. That seemed to do a very respectable job and they come in at two, two thousand dollars.
I don't have, I don't have one quote here.
You do? Yeah.
It's just this piece of paper right here.
It looks like it's the second page to this one.
That's a quote.
He must've got it, I think, on an email.
Yeah. Okay, but that's who he, that's, that's who Kurt's recommendation would be is if we go, if we go with them. Okay, so, with that being said, now that's something we probably need to jump on to right away. Cause you never know if a storm comes through and throw that.
Where is it, where is the tree on, in the, and is it like on, on city properties or on the?
Well, I don't know what that property is. It runs between the, between the two houses there, one on Fifty-Fall and one on Harrison Circle. I don't know if that's easement or if that's.
Is it in the, it, we have a. Is it in the, it, we have a fence around the?
Yeah, we have a fence around it.
Is it in the fence line or outside the fence line?
Inside the fence.
Okay.
Okay. At any rate, I would like to, uh, move to, uh, spend the two thousand dollars to get the tree removed.
So you're making a motion to do so?
I did.
You said move, it's not motion.
That's not a motion, when you move.
It is close, it is close.
Uh, yeah.
It's, it's okay, I'll second his move.
Sure. You can move. Alright. Off, I'm gonna bust a move. Motion made by Rocky to hire Elevate Tree Service to cut down the tree at the Fifty Falls List Station, seconded by Steve, two thousand dollars.
Ro call, um, Mike?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I would just say too, that this is a good opportunity for the town to implement their terms and conditions into the, whatever the proposal is with, with this tree service that he was talking about.
Going back to the A A P.
Yeah, so you've got your standard set, set of terms and conditions to cover the town. Make sure that's implemented into the agreement.
Do you, do you have that in?
I forwarded to, yeah, I can forward it to you.
But I, I did notice on that there were, in some of the later pages, where it's still listed West Lafayette as opposed to being switched to Dayton.
I, I did one, uh, Mark had us prepare one like, early on this year, I think, that's Dayton specific. So it's substantially the same other than West Lafayette, so.
I mean, the generic document, right, we just fill in the company name and say, okay, find us?
Yeah.
Might as well get it in a habit.
Oh, yeah, moving on. Okay, um, leaf pickup dates, November third, November seventeenth, December first, and December fifteenth. Dumpster day, November first. Under new business, I make a motion to accept, uh, the history transaction.
Adjustment report? The adjustment report?
The adjustment report. Do we get to give the amount?
No.
Just, just to give the date for, for the.
Okay, date from, uh, September first through September thirtieth.
Second.
Rocky and seconded by Carla?
Mike, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
I don't have anything under old business for anybody else yet, anything? If not, we'll move on. Any public comment? Any council comment?
Uh, so, you received this thing from, uh, from MS Coordinator for Tip Canoe County Partnership. And he is
just lead.
For, uh, assigning individuals appointed by the town, appointed by the town board to serve on the Tip Canoe County Partnership for Water Quality Board. So I thought maybe we ought to do that, since it has to be done by the town board.
That's how nothing does Tootsie Rolls, I'm wrong, thank you. We had that virtual last week, and meeting on this Thursday.
Right, no, that's not that. This is.
I didn't receive it.
Rocky Richards, right there. Just emailed to you last Thursday.
Okay, well.
So, it says needs two people appointed. Basically, what they're wanting is somebody to go to these meetings, which, when you're not busy doing locates, you go to meetings. Anyhow, so, uh, the meetings are typically during the day.
Of course they are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, it said, uh, who we need, there needs to be a primary person and a backup person listed in a letter. Need these letters from town of Dayton for twenty-five and twenty-six. Uh, so, uh, you can go ahead and do both of them, so they're in my office. Although I thought we had already, I had already assigned Kurt earlier this year, but, uh.
Well, Kurt would definitely probably be the, be the one, um, as far as a backup. My schedule probably wouldn't allow me with my little open window from ten to two. I don't know what Carla's schedule was, or something like, uh, some chief of vice president of utility, or she might.
So are they just, is this just to go sit and listen to me, or are they?
Yeah, I, I asked Kurt, and basically he said, you just go. They, they need you to be there to sign in, because they, it's important we keep attendance and meeting, and meeting minutes. We are required to do so by IDEM. And IDEM does look at those documents during our audits to verify, verify participation by each entity.
Did they just have a meeting?
Is it a monthly meeting?
Monthly meeting.
I think they just had, I'm thinking it's tied into the same people.
Well, but if we get our water from Lafayette, and Lafayette is somebody there, then we still need to be there.
CB Burke.
Yeah, yes it is, because she brought that up.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't know if you were looking or not.
No, no, I, 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 I think that because you have a separate water utility, I mean, I, I don't know much about that organization. Since you have a separate water utility.
Because we don't, we don't coordinate the water, we don't process the water, we just have the water on.
This is not for water, this is for MS four, this is for stormwater.
Right.
Whole different, whole different ballgame. We pay, we pay five thousand dollars a year to start with to be in this partnership, okay? And, uh, then we have to pay additional, additional money past that. So, kind of a sore spot with me, but that's how things.
But it's not an option? We don't get to say we're not gonna?
Well, it, it's an option if we want to run the program by ourselves.
Yeah.
So.
Well, Kurt, Kurt's been to these meetings.
He, he told me the other day, he was on his way to go to one.
Right.
When he got an emergency locate call, so he had to turn around and, and come back.
That, that's right.
So, so that's when we, that's, and so we need a backup person.
Right. And that's what, uh, I'm kind of working on right now. Is that good enough answer?
You're in charge of the utility board.
Okay. You okay with that answer?
And you're working on it?
Yeah.
It's reasonable, I mean.
Okay.
Okay, well.
You're working on it, we're looking into it, we got a primary, we're just working on a secondary, yeah.
Okay.
So.
That was gonna bring it, I was gonna bring this up anyway.
When's the deadline?
Uh, for this? I don't know that he gave a deadline, but he said, um, he said he wanted it, and so you'll need to respond to this.
I will.
Okay.
I will, and then, uh, I'll find out what those days are.
You will be on this, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, like I said, last Friday, we had a virtual with the same group of people on this erosion, uh, control inspection down here on the, uh, west side of Dayton Road.
Baker Farms West.
Yeah, Baker Farms West. Apparently, there's a drain, there's a drain there, that's completely been filled in with dirt and stuff like that, and needs to be taken care of. It's Malakas's responsibility, so we're gonna meet with them Thursday morning at nine-thirty. And, uh, let him know, give him the option that he has to take care of this, or there will be a fine.
On the west side?
Yeah.
Huh.
No, 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 the west.
Yes, it is.
So you haven't done anything on the west side yet, that's?
There's, there's nothing on the west side, it's on, it's Baker Farms East.
Okay, I just need to picture a lot of thoughts.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
It, it, Kurt's got it in there on the, on, on the computer, but anyway, it needs to be, it needs to be tended to, taken care of, and it's at the expense of Malakas, not the Tom and Dick. So I'll just pass this on to you, so. Meet with them Thursday morning at nine-thirty.
So, did you get the other email today then, that they want, they want to update? It was about updating the development guide.
I got an email, I'm thoroughly, I guess that.
They want, they want approval for, for ten hours, up to ten hours of time, for that two hundred some dollars an hour.
They being B F N S?
No.
No.
This is CB Burke. So we hired, we hired them as our MS, MS four coordinators. We, we are under contract with them. I suggested to them that they provide us with a proposal with not to exceed them out. And then she came back with. Anyhow, she said, uh, we, we don't need to, we don't need a written proposal, because you guys are already under contract with us. So, do you want to do it? To get, to get all that information put onto the, um, development, development guide, I guess.
That was from Henry, Henry Butt.
Yeah. Yes, that's correct.
Right.
I don't know if you want to address that tonight or not.
No, I think I'm gonna pass on that, because memory serves me right. She's one of the three that's gonna be at this meeting Thursday. I'll get with, I'll get with, uh, I'll get with Kurt.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And discuss with him, then you can ask after that.
Clear enough?
That's you.
Okay, any other council comment?
As I said, we'll join this here. Alright, now we're open to town council meeting. Uh, first thing, uh, Patrick, we got ordinance, uh, amending chapter seventy-five of the town code parking.
Yeah, I, I think this was discussed at length for the last meeting. Um, the, there was a, a, a proposal that had been submitted, I think, by the, um, by the folks in charge of, or the parking commission. Um, I think we've incorporated all the changes that the marshal had indicated were necessary for the public town, for the public safety and for the town. Um, and I think it's reflected in the, in the ordinance, so. I don't think I have much else to add.
Okay. Uh, I'll make the motion that we adopt ordinance number twenty-two-five dash fifteen, ordinance amending chapter seventy-five of code of ordinancees, the town of Dayton, from Indiana.
I'll second that.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve. Do we have any, uh, public comment? Any council comment? Please call the board.
Carla? I shouldn't.
I don't know, you never should, I keep telling you that. Start with somebody else.
Mike?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
Carla?
We're gonna abstain.
Motion carries.
Alright. Got the allowance docket for September twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Make a motion, we, uh, approve the allowance docket for September twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, an amount of eighteen thousand, two hundred, two hundred dollars and seventy-four cents.
Second.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the claim docket for October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, an amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second.
I got the question. On the second page, for Mark Jones, there's a fee, a charge of seven hundred twenty dollars. Uh, I'd like to know what that was for.
So let's see. This is for, uh, technical services for, of, uh, an amount of two hundred and ten dollars?
No.
Yes, it's right here, here's the bill.
Two hundred and ten dollars, that says seven hundred twenty, as does this.
Two hundred and ten dollars?
Then why does this say seven hundred and twenty?
I wasn't done, Carl. Uh, technical services assisted Mark Armister with review and email data, sixty dollars. Recovery outlook data for Kohler, Keiger, and Stevenson from December two thousand twenty-three backup, three hundred dollars. Restored email data to Mark Armister's laptop, three hundred thirty dollars. And then, uh, technical services repair, Cindy stated your laptop was not able to charge. We verified charger was operating correctly. Also tested different wall outlets with chargers. Laptop battery percentage reached one hundred percent upon inspection. Concern was no longer present for a hundred and twenty dollars.
So he charged a hundred and twenty dollars for a product we bought from him, believed that wasn't working. But turned out to be working, so he charged a hundred and twenty bucks.
Okay.
Just want to make sure I understand.
When they come here, every time they come here, it's one twenty.
No, he's a consultant, that's why you're working, that's fine.
So the other six hundred dollars is a backup for your personal computer?
No, it was thirty dollars. Restored email data to Mark Armister's laptop.
Yeah, you're breaking it down, the total, the rest of that is six hundred dollars for, for.
Six hundred.
A hundred and twenty was for Cindy.
The remote to server installed Windows server update, that was two hundred and ten dollars. Cindy was a hundred and twenty dollars.
That doesn't equal seven twenty. The rest of all of that, there's six hundred and a hundred and twenty, correct? All the rest of that was for you.
Yes.
So it's six hundred dollars for emails and a backup for your.
Six hundred, it's not six hundred.
Explain to me how it's not.
It's seven twenty minus two-ten minus one point. It's not six hundred.
What's the two-ten for?
The two-ten was for, uh, technical services, remote, remote to win server installed Windows server updates.
For what?
I don't know.
It's, uh, updating server software on a machine.
Probably because, probably because, uh, the Windows just changed to Windows eleven from ten.
And so why are you searching emails for twenty-two thirty?
Why am I searching emails? Because I'm trying to find out information on the cul-de-sac.
So you're still doing your personal vendetta?
It's not a personal vendetta.
And you're charging the town to do it?
No, I'm not charging the town, I'm doing the town's business here.
That is not the town's business, you're still trying to, you're still trying to, no. I, I totally disagree with this, and I don't think we should pay that.
Well, I think you're wrong.
I think you're wrong.
Then we, then, we'll, we'll find out here in a minute. Motion's been made to adopt, to approve the, uh, claim docket, one hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-nine cents.
I have a question, so was, was the information you pulled out of the old, sort of, is that, is that asked for by the state who's doing the investigation?
No, so I can get additional information to give the state.
So the state requested it?
No. Not, not, not in that way. It's part of the investigation of finding out what's going on.
Would you turn it over to the state, if the state wanted it, they would have requested it?
Somebody has to provide the information, Carla. You certainly do not want to provide any of the information to them.
If the state didn't ask for it, why are you providing it?
Because it needs to be, it needs to be found out.
And if the state wants it, they'll ask for it. I don't understand why you're doing, digging around and doing stuff that doesn't even.
Know about it, how would, why would they ask for it?
Why didn't you dig for it before you turned them in?
I have been digging for it, and I needed more information.
The personal vendetta, that's what it is.
Sir, sir, you're out of order.
Please, you're not helping.
You're out of order. One more out, bros, and you're out the door.
Seriously, Mark?
I am quite serious.
You.
I'm quite serious here. Did I get a second?
So our only choices are either we, we, we say no to the whole thing, or we say yes to the whole thing, correct? Yeah.
You can modify the motion.
Let me see.
You can accept everything that that one.
Yeah, I think you could, you could modify the motion. And there's currently a motion before the council that needs to be acted upon. Um, I think you've got to make a decision on that, if there's not a second, it dies for lack of a second. Um, if, and then you can modify or make a new motion after that. So, process-wise, that's how, how it works.
How long we have to wait?
You said you're gonna go and get a second on it before you can modify it. Is there a time limit?
Not a time limit, I make it a reasonable timeframe, you know? If, if it reindicates that they're knocking up, then he's gonna second, then I think that's, that's out of the.
Just addressing this part of the, part of the year, uh. Well, my thought is, is. If part of this is personal.
Not personal, Rocky.
Well, it wasn't anything that's more acted on prior to doing it. You know? I mean, some of the stuff, like what Cindy needed and everything, that's understandable, but the other stuff, I don't understand. Why we had to go, go through and, uh, do it, you know? I mean, the state's working on it now, supposedly, they've been working on it for months. And hadn't gotten back to us one time yet to give us any kind of an update. So, you know, what's the deal here? I've asked this a couple of different times.
Well. You might be interested to find out.
I'd be really interested in finding out.
When, uh, when this occurred, and when I got this information, that I found emails that had been deleted. As a matter of fact. After I got the first account, Ron Kohler's email account. I discovered that there are no emails for December of two thousand twenty, all of two thousand twenty-one, all of two thousand twenty-two. And all of two thousand twenty-three, except for some in December of two thousand twenty-three. There were some prior to two thousand twenty, so there's this period of time that all those emails are missing. You might be interested in finding out that all of Jim Manango's emails were deleted.
Have he remailed to who?
They don't know.
We don't know, because they were deleted. But that is public information that has been deleted.
Yeah.
So there's a problem with that, don't you think?
Well. Could, there will be a problem, but it's something that needs to be brought up.
That's right, and you know what? If I hadn't have done this, we never would have known that, would we? Would we, Carla? No, we wouldn't have known it, but we do now.
And it proves nothing.
It proves that the emails were deleted.
But why would people be able to delete it when they get off the council and the past six months were deleted?
Those, those emails are part, are part of the public record, they should never be deleted. It's illegal, it is illegal to delete emails.
Check everybody else's.
It is illegal, I did. I've got Stan Kiger's, I've got Stevenson's.
Other councils going back twenty, thirty years, a lot of them.
Twenty, thirty years ago, they didn't have them. You, somebody deleted all of your emails, Ron.
Well, I don't know who did it.
Well, of course you don't.
Mark, I did not delete any of your emails.
Can we get back to just the, the subject at hand?
Thank you.
Let's just work on this and, and not open up the, the can of worms, is that for now? So, um. The, the question is, do we mind making the motion? With excluding this particular line item until we can talk about it in more detail, or figure out what we want to do? Let's just keep the meeting moving forward so we can get through this.
I'd like to entertain that, if, if, if it's, if it's possible, if, if, if we went long enough without getting stuck.
Well, I think we're past that point.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think.
So, make the motion and we'll.
We'll make the motion that, uh, we approve it. The constable officer. With the exception of the seven hundred and twenty dollars for Mark W. Jones.
Well, the one.
What's that?
Well, the hundred and twenty is fine, the other's six hundred.
Okay.
Not six hundred, Carla.
Well.
Can we, I mean, can we start nitpicking to a specific number, or?
I, I think you can make the motion for what you want to pay on that bill.
Okay.
Okay, I, I'll make a motion that, that we'll pay a hundred and twenty dollars of the Mark W. Jones invoice here, of the seven hundred and twenty, and then the six hundred dollars.
So you don't want, you don't want to pay his, uh, remote to server?
Not yet.
Install?
Not yet.
His remote to install that.
Well, it's a remote software update, that's, that's within reason.
So that's two-ten?
If it, if it was, well, but was it on your computer? I, I just want clarification, was it on your computer at your home?
No, it was, it was.
Or was it here?
It was on the server in the, uh, in the treasurer clerk's office. So we're talking one-twenty for the service call?
And.
Two-ten?
And two-ten.
For the?
Right.
Okay, so.
So I will make, resend, I'll, I'll say we'll pay three hundred and thirty dollars of this seven hundred and twenty dollar bill. Say, comes up as three hundred and thirty dollars, right? One-twenty, two-ten?
Right.
Okay, and then, uh, the remainder will fall under a discussion to determine. Or.
How to move forward.
Yes.
And I think you, you probably want to pay the rest of the claims as well.
Correct, yes.
Just a hundred and twenty dollars, I think you want to mention that as well.
Yes. So we'll accept the claims docket minus that amount on that bill.
Oh, minus, uh.
So three-thirty, what, minus seven twenty?
Yeah.
Too late to date for math.
No, what was?
Three-thirty, seven twenty minus three-thirty.
Three-ninety.
Two-ninety?
Three-ninety.
Three-ninety? Okay.
So. Moving forward, pay the claim docket, with the exception of the three hundred and ninety for Mark, Mark Jones. Okay, second.
Motion made by Rocky. I'm just gonna figure how much that was, but, um, anyway, we will only pay, um, Mark Jones the three hundred and forty dollars.
Three-thirty.
Three-thirty, thank you. Got it. Rocky made the motion, Steve seconded it, roll call, Mike?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
All right. Next is the reports, the appropriation report, these are for appropriation report for September. The, uh, bank reconciliation for August, right? That was August?
Yes.
The fund report for September, and the revenue report for September. Make a motion to accept those reports.
Second.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve.
Sorry, forget it now.
Did we get a motion in a second?
Yes.
Sorry, I was, okay, let's do Mike.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
All right. This takes us to. Um, approval of minutes, public hearing of nine sixteen, two thousand twenty-five. Utility board meeting nine sixteen twenty-five, town council meeting nine sixteen twenty-five, make a motion that we approve.
That's good.
How do you vote, Mike?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Mark?
Yeah, I vote yes.
Carla?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Clerk treasurer report.
Okay. First, I want to thank you guys for allowing me to, to, um, pick up my office, and I have a lot of people to thank. Carla for helping paint. Um, Kurt for doing a whole bunch of stuff he didn't want to do. But he was a big help, and Suzie, our utilities clerk, helped me move things in and out, so I really appreciate that. It takes all of us. So, the other thing is, um, the ordinance for approving the budget for two thousand twenty-six. And I've got my. And so the Ford B, uh, ordinance resolution for appropriations and tax rates. And if someone would make a motion, we discussed this at last meeting. The adopted budget.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, uh, for the budget for two thousand twenty-six on second reading.
Second.
Motion made by myself and seconded by Steve.
We'll call Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
And Carla?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Anything else?
Oh, yeah, I guess I do. I'm not sure where the iPad is laying right now, but, um, I did purchase an iPad, and I think all of you have seen it. Or, yeah, I'm pretty sure you all did. Um, we're working on getting Mike's emails on it, but what I would do, if you would pass this, you would each have an iPad. I'm not sure all of you want one, we'll go through that. Um, because Mark has his laptop, so I don't know if he wants one or not, but we would, um, each one of you would be assigned one. You would take it home, you'd have it, you'd be responsible for it. Um, I would send that, you could get all your emails on your iPad, where you guys could read them, it wouldn't be small if you don't have a computer home. Um, and then, for the monthly meetings, everything would come through the iPad to you, um, so you would have all of it. And there will be, um, hopefully, I'm gonna set it up where you can come in here if you do want to print it as paper. But, um, you would be in charge of doing that. So it would all, it would all be on your iPad, and it would be in order, so you can go through it as we go through the agenda. So I'm asking to purchase, um, four more. Actually, five more. And then, um. There would be one here for, um, our friend Patrick, so that he could go through it also. But that would stay here, sorry, we don't trust the attorney.
I printed up in my office too, so you guys don't have to buy me.
So it was, it was, uh, three hundred and forty-nine dollars for the iPad. So that's what I'm asking for.
That's our only option, is an iPad.
Everyone has an iPhone, but you, and I'm not sure about Mark. Droid, yeah, Android, okay. So, the other thing was, the big reason was, I suppose, because I think of myself, because I am an iPhone, and I know how to do those. I know that we're having trouble getting Mike, but I think it's because he doesn't exist, remember, we discussed that? But it would be, they're easy to work with, they really are, they, you would, yeah. So that is our only option, yes.
Well, definitely would save one a lot of ink and paper, I've heard.
A lot of paper that I throw away with ink on it because of printing so much, yes.
So, are you looking to do the Apple care with those? Because that's gonna be more than the three forty-nine.
It, it was like sixty-nine dollars, I think, per machine. What is, and I did get it on that.
Cover the accidental damage, that loss.
And we do need that, I had it put on that.
The only other concern I would have, other than that Mike doesn't exist. Would be, um, we still, I, I still think you need to look into some part, the mobile device management service, whether that's handled through Mark or through Ryan. Or how you want to do that, but in, in situations like we saw with Leah, where she kind of, you know, something came up and she had to leave. If that device is in an Apple ID that she has set up, we no longer have, necessarily have access to it. Whereas mobile device management allows you to do things like push upgrades to the server without having to come in and do those things, so. I think there's another question you need to, to get answered before we go. Hold guns into it, but that's just my two cents, other than that, I'm gonna sit here quietly because I have nothing to do with it, I did not sell her the iPad.
If we don't want to, if we want to keep printing them out, that's fine with me too. Just figure out how to get me on it.
Well, you, yeah, but.
Make me exist.
Well, the other thing is, and, and rightfully so, I know that one of your concerns is you don't necessarily want to have town business on your personal computer, and this kind of solves that issue for you as well. Which is another reason to do this, I know that for like myself, and I assume Mark, and, um, we're past that point, because I've got it on my iPad and I've got it on my phone, so. But it solves another issue above and beyond whether we're printing this stuff for you, but that's.
And for Rocky and Carla.
Yeah, I.
So what was the last little thing that you were talking about? Say that again, what your, what your issue was?
The mobile device management?
Yeah.
Mobile device management is typically a service you, you, you go through a company, and it allows. Mobile device management is typically a service you, you go through a company and it allows one person, in this case, it would be Cindy, to administer all of the devices, we have control over all the devices, she can tell you where all the devices are. If, in a situation where somebody leaves um and leaves it locked or whatever, so to a point where we couldn't get into it, she can unlock it to a point where we could then.
That makes sense.
You know, reformat and give to somebody else.
Right.
We're not stuck trying to get it fixed, which we can do through the company, but it's a process, so. And I don't know how much those cost, obviously, if you wanna reach out to Ryan, he can tell you that.
Okay, that's why he's gonna ask who to talk to about it.
And then just from my own personal thing, I'd like to see how it lays out, you know, when we, when you're looking at the. Cause I know our conversations, when I'm at APC, it's just an easy thing to scroll right through the thing, cause it's all one continuous document. And I know it's important that we be able, if you've gotta jump from document to document or PDF to PDF, you're not gonna do it.
No, I would put it all, it would all be scanned as a PDF and you would just go right through that.
Anyway, but we, she went with the least expensive device that we had, it'll be great for what she's doing with it, so.
Okay, and I'll check on the mobile device management with Ryan. And try to get you set, and then I guess we'll bring it up again at the next meeting.
Meanwhile, we'll try to make Mike exist.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe.
I think that was it, I thought there was something else, but I don't have my notebook here, cause you know, I got too much paper.
Okay, your plan representative report?
I did not realize that the uh, the United Organize Amendment one two-two was already in the package, so I created another one. I will tell you that at the top of the one I gave you is a summary of the ordinance, as well as the bullet points right down. But what it really boils down to is it changes the amount of distance between, they have to be, gas stations have to be apart, as well as they're offset from the street and offset from any residence. It won't affect the existing stations in town, but if somebody wanted to build another station in town, they would have to go buy this. So, I like the idea of keeping the stations farther apart. Also, the idea of extending the amount of space that has to be between them and a residence, cause nobody wants to live next to a gas station. I think that the amendment is worth passing.
I have a question on it though, on the, on the, I don't know which one you're looking at, one I, the one I had that was in my package is the one I marked up, so. On the second page of the staff recommendations. It talks about deconditioning, plan requirements, and it talks about car washes. And so, when you think of car wash down here, should that be sold, how, what does that mean?
Well, that car.
Towns requirement, or is that whoever is the seller, or is that who the buyer is, who's responsible for the deconditioning process?
Um, my understanding, and again, I need to delve into that particular piece, because the other thing is that gas station is not owned by, I mean, the car wash isn't owned by the gas station, if I remember correctly. So they're not tied together.
Oh, it's only talking about car washes within a gas, okay, sorry.
And typically, I know from Mike, in the past, when I, when I lived in California, when a gas station would go out of visitation commission, it was a major ordeal, because they have to suck all the, they literally have to reprocess the ground to get any gas that's been leaked out of the tanks and stuff out of there. And that's a multi-year process, and the owner of the property and or the, the gas station has to pay for those monthly, so.
I just, I just read it, car wash is a separate, it's a team within, so.
I believe it's only a one, one piece.
That's fine, thanks.
So I would make a motion that we would pass the amendment or the ordinance number, I would assume twenty twenty-five dash. Twenty twenty-five dash seventeen regarding UZO one one, one two-two.
Second. Motion made by Steve, seconded by myself.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
And then there was a new uh UZO that I just got in the mail, which we'll talk about next week, cause I haven't had a chance to really dig into it. And it's regarding data farms, which I don't foresee as being an issue anytime soon.
I can, I can say it makes somebody who wants to open a data farming facility more difficult, not less difficult.
Which honestly is a good thing.
That was the consensus, at least, was what people thought, so.
Whereas the business is nice, but it, they tend to be very resource intense, they suck up a lot of water and a lot of power.
I think the cap was ten thousand square feet or something like that, which is tiny for a data facility.
Right.
And if it's above that ten thousand square foot cap, they have to go through a special exception, variance, and then go in front of whoever the municipality is, I think, so there's a three or four step process.
Right, so I would assume that more likely passed, but I'd like to take another look at it, of course, I did miss the meeting, I didn't see that. We'll talk about it next, next month. And that's all I have.
Okay, police report?
Good evening. Update on the new squad, we do have the new squad, it's down in the barn, no problems there. All the equipment that I have to provide and give to the installer has been shipped and received. That's like the radio, dash cameras, and the radar system. Only thing I have to get yet is the MDT, which is the laptop. The installer move over is advising me January-ish to get us installed, get all the rest of the upfitting equipment. So, all of that's going along smoothly, any questions on that? So, last month, we talked about the golf cart ordinance, and I requested that you consider making some alterations in that. I sent everybody some photos this last week to review. Of particular concern of mine was the allowance of off-road vehicles that are not golf carts, as defined by Indiana law. So, I printed off some more copies of those, I cannot have seen those.
There's a lot more of what you're calling off-road vehicles that I even, I didn't know some of these existed.
Pardon me?
There's a lot here, I didn't know some of these things even existed.
Yeah, and, and this is just a small example, I couldn't, I didn't go through every manufacturer and print off what state law would define as an off-road vehicle. I just was trying to give a, a broad example of each, each thing. And just to reiterate, I'm just trying to make our ordinance to simplify it. And most towns that pass a golf cart ordinance, it is specifically for golf carts. They don't open it up to other off-road vehicles unless you're someplace in Wisconsin that has their major recreation and their major income in those areas are hunting, fishing, snowmobiling, things like that, which basically we are not those. So, in Indiana, if a town or city has allowed, made allowance for golf carts, it's for golf. It's not opening it up to a wide range of off-road vehicles that could, could be permitted.
Couple of these vehicles that I'm looking at through here would, in my, my opinion, would be used for projects like lawn work, things like that. Okay, they wouldn't actually be something where you'd be frightened of, and down the streets, obviously like you do in a golf cart. Of course, a golf cart's not off-road like these vehicles are, okay, uh, so. I don't know, I, I, I mean, personally, I agree, I mean, I think we should only allow golf carts, I don't think we need, I mean, if somebody's got a, a, one of those, got, you know, one of them things that's used in lawn work with or something like that, that's a different scenario, a different situation, okay? Can't go, I mean, you know, if they have to get it on the road because they're hauling something from point A to point B, okay, they're not out frightening around the neighborhood in it like you do with golf carts.
And we wouldn't be talking about construction, people are making construction equipment and.
So.
You know, McAllister working on something around their perimeter and, or a utility.
Yeah.
That has a small UTV as part of their work.
And that, but I will remind you that when, when you and and Vic, Leah and our group were running, there was, we were running up, side by side up and down the streets with signs and doing that kind of stuff, so it, it, there has been a precedent set to do that. We've had side, we had golf carts, but we also had a side by side, a gas-powered, non-golf cart side by side.
You did?
Yeah, that's what Ashley drives.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, I'm just, just saying, I, I just, I, I understand the, the, honestly, I prefer we just do away with the whole thing, because it's just one more thing to try to keep track of, and, but.
Do away with the whole thing, that's what we talk.
Golf carts, side by side is the whole thing, you wanna roll it right on the street, you get a car, you ride on the street. But I get there's a lot of folks with golf carts in town, they like pissing around on them, that's fine, but.
I don't get it either, but they do.
Right. No, fine. But, I mean, now we're, we're talking, okay, we could have one type of vehicle, not another type of vehicle, and I understand, Marshall might have talked about it, I understand the concerns of safety and things, because some of those things can scoot along at a pretty good price, speed. I, I just don't know where we draw the line on that, you know? If it's got all the mandated things that a vehicle on the road has to have, I mean, I don't know. This is just a really weird, I mean, for me, it's just really weird to kind of try to narrow down these things, as much as it pains me not to, to agree with Scott on anything.
I mean, another thing is that contraption act though. Another resident's driving, I think I called him again, I don't know if it's called a law car.
Right.
It's gotta rule hold its top up and everything, you know, but, but, you know.
No, I took the, the, the group. Even the, if you really get into the, I don't know, I, it's just, when you start picking one over the other, it's just. And I don't think there are that many people in town that have, other than, I don't think there are that many people that have golf carts and side by sides together, but.
Right.
Obviously, there's a bigger majority of golf carts than there are side by sides.
So Steve, if I hear you correctly, we're trying to create and draft an ordinance to help one person in our town, maybe two.
Right.
When we've got others that got, you know, that's a very small utility type, side by side vehicles. But we've got other people with those four by four Polaris examples in there that are, they're, they're high-performance vehicles. And they're very different than, than that, but it is hard for me, and I think it would be hard for the attorney, to articulate a allowance for that, where it's very easy to say, the state defines a golf cart as a golf cart that would be allowed to be used on a golf course for the purpose of playing golf, period. That, that simplifies everything, and it, it's, it's easily defined. Really opened up a big can of worms way back in two thousand sixteen, when we tried to make an exception for one or two types of vehicles, and we did a poor job.
Yeah, I think we should just make the change and just be consistent across the board with just the golf cart. Not a golf cart, can't drive it, what golf cart was intended to be.
Okay, make the motion.
So moved, as Scott prefers.
And I, I think if, if the motion passes, it would be to, I, I think you'd need to draft an ordinance if the majority of the council wants to do that, to amend the ordinance that's currently in place. And I think, if I'm following it correctly, is to just simply change the definition of golf cart to what state code provides for the definition of golf cart.
It's actually in there, we just need to remove the reference to off-road vehicles.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll resend.
But you'd have to move your, your.
Yeah, I'll resend my previous badly stated motion. And so, a new, hopefully better stated motion is, I move that we amend the current ordinance to restate what a golf cart is, by the state.
Indiana Code nine dash one, three dash two dash two, six, nine, point one?
Seven.
Point seven, I'm sorry, twenty-seven.
Yes.
And that's already in our ordinance, we just basically direct him to remove the word and bring the ordinance back to you next meeting, and then you review it, and then vote on approval at that time, you know?
Yeah, it'll be a one-page ordinance amending ordinance twenty twenty-eight, and it'll just have the irrelevant language, that's not consistent with state code, stricken out, if that's what you guys, is what a majority of you guys want me to do.
That's what my motion is.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Carla to strike everything from ordinance twenty, twenty dash eight, section one, A, only to read golf cart shall mean golf cart as defined by Indiana Code nine dash thirteen dash two dash sixty-nine point seven. Strike the rest of that paragraph out, seconded by Steve.
Roll call, Mike?
Yes.
Question? Question? Sorry, I just want to clarify this, so you're saying that what the gentleman up the road here writing would no longer be allowed to be ridden, and the one you said actually seems to have would be no longer be able to be ridden?
I'm not sure what your other example is, but.
That him, that uh, Taylor has, Kenny Taylor drive wronged in that white unit.
Only thing I've ever seen him in was a golf cart.
Well, that, that's, that, that's a.
It's an extended one, it's like.
In theory, it's just an E, it's electric, real side by side. I don't know that, well, I don't know if it's classified as a golf cart, I don't know.
I've seen them on golf carts, so, that's what I'm.
So I'm, I'm just saying, because me, I mean, that's just a fancied up golf cart, so.
And golf carts get fancy, I mean, there's, they lift them, they put fancy tires on them, but they're still.
It's still a golf cart.
They still have an electric or that subdued engine.
And it's electric.
Right.
Okay.
It was built to be a golf cart out on golf course.
Maybe, maybe that would be a flaw to put in there, because it has to be electric, can't be gas.
Well, you're getting back into, we're defining this, we're trying to say away from defining this.
You're right, you're right, my apologies, my apologies, go ahead and carry on.
Okay. Mike, we, we asked you, did we ask Steve?
I don't think so, yes.
Yes, Rocky?
I'll abstain.
Mark?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Okay.
So then I'll prepare the, yeah, so then I'll prepare and amend to the ordinance and be adopted at the next.
You have the ordinance, so you.
You've got it right here, yeah, and it's online too, and you CC me an email, so.
That's all I have, any questions?
Halloween schedule?
Pardon?
The Halloween schedule?
Talked about that last month, but it's Halloween from five to eight. Halloween from five to eight.
I'd like to revisit it, so, in case.
October thirty-first.
Watches this meeting.
October thirty-first, Friday, five PM to eight PM.
It's shared to thirty-first now, right?
I think the Halloween.
Is it, let's check.
It's shared on the thirty-first.
Thanks, Scott.
Alright. New business, as promised, salary ordinance discussion. So.
Is there any way we can table this till next meeting, due to the time?
No, we need to, we need to have something ready to, I would like to have something ready to, for next meeting. If you guys want to table it, fine, but I think we should, I think we just need to do it, that's what we're here, that's what we're here to do. You wanna do it, or you wanna table it?
I'd like to make a motion to table it till next month, gives more time to go over, get some more notes, our notes, or whatever. Maybe all of you did a little bit better job than I did, but. Maybe all of you did a little bit better job than I did, but I went very thorough, going all the way up.
What's your deadline, Cindy?
Yeah, because it would be the first paid period in January, so as long as I have a, a foredate of December, it'll all.
We need to, we need to have enough time for the attorney to, uh, get it written up, and then to get it back to us, so we can vote for it as well.
Uh, you'd be able to theoretically suspend the rules and do it one meeting too. But, you know, obviously, there's gonna be a crunch, and potentially, you're gonna have to have special.
The problem of doing it one meeting is we haven't discussed it, and if there's any changes that need to happen, it's gonna, it would happen at, at a meeting, and then you wouldn't be able to be into an ordinance to, to be voted on at that meeting, so.
It's a, a kindish crunch. But I, I, the law on it is, um, if a salary ordinance for the next year needs to be adopted before the end of the prior year, um, if there isn't one that's adopted, then the ordinance from the year before is what controls.
So that leaves us November, December to get it together and done and voted on. And, uh, usually we wind up with a special meeting at the end of the year, anyway. So I would rather everybody feel comfortable to talk about salaries than have a conversation if not everybody feel comfortable talking about salaries.
Okay.
So I'll second his motion.
Hopefully, everybody will feel s- s- comfortable at the next meeting. Motion made by Rocky, seconded by Carla, just to.
Hand it to next month.
Do the salary ordinance discussion next month. Do you read all the names?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
It's a good thing he said.
Sorry, I didn't have anything to.
Yeah, I'm out of candy.
I was gonna say, I ate everything I had, so.
You know, I, I, I specifically sent this thing out a week early, so that everybody would have time to look at it. So, call the vote, please.
Mike?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Mark?
No.
And Carla?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
And, uh, I guess I'll stick on the ADA coordinator, council assignment, because Carla has already done that. Public comment. Any public comment? Council comment?
I have something. I have something. Let a gal come in here from, uh, Sinclair Recreation, with some ideas on what we can put on the property across the street. And, uh, she's put together something, preparing something, and would like to, uh, come to our next meeting, next month, with a diagram. Um, I'd like to get her on the, uh, agenda. Her name is Marcia Derbyshire with Sinclair Rec. And, uh, there are some catalogs. She left plenty of literature and catalogs in the, uh, break room in there. Uh, that she just sent me a text the other day, wanted to know if anybody had a chance to look at them, come up and any suggestions, your ideas of what their thoughts might be, that they might like to see over there. So just letting you know that it's there, so if you got anything, we can certainly get a, get ahold of her and let her know. I'm looking forward to her coming in with a present, a tape.
Did she send us a photograph?
No, she's going to when she comes to this next meeting. She'll, 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 she'll have a drawing, probably. I'm assuming she'll have a, a, a drawing, you know?
I just, I just asked, because of, yeah, I, these are my answers. I just, obviously, she's got the, you know, half a million dollars to build up the recreation or town.
Yeah, it's to my knowledge. Well, to my knowledge, obviously, we could probably apply for a grant for the grant lady, you know, and, well, they match the grant, so. My understanding.
So, be sh- be sure to send me her information, of her, her name and stuff, so I can get it on.
I will, yeah.
Uh, you got anything, Carla? Mike, Steve? I wanted to ask you guys, uh, this is, this is my thought. This hasn't been asked of me or anything, but do you guys think that the town should pay for Baker Farms West Streets?
I'm sorry, what?
The town. Should the town pay for, uh, the new Baker Farms West subdivision? Should the town pay for the streets?
No.
To install them?
Yeah.
Like they.
No.
They paid for east, why would we pay for west?
Okay, well, that's, that's what I thought you were gonna say. I, I just asking this question.
Why didn't it come up?
I'm thinking, because I'm thinking, I'm thinking, hang on with, just bear with me for a second. So, what if he donates the property to the town?
What property?
The streets.
Well, when he gets them paid, doesn't he turn them over to us anyway?
He does, but, if he does, let's say he decides he's gonna donate them. Donate the property to the street, to the town. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. This meeting's adjourned.
Was deciding to give.
Oh, yeah.